Okay, good morning. It is the regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen. It's Tuesday, August 6th at 8:31. In front of you, you have this morning's agenda. I have two edits. First, I'd like to remove item 12 from the agenda. It's the Wave Any House Lapham Center Facade and Chimney Assessment. Unfortunately, our Erin from Hoffman, who is the structural engineer who did the majority of the work, she had her parent pass away. So she is not able to present, and they didn't have anyone else in the firm who had really sort of been as involved in the assessment. So they really want Erin to give the presentation. So we will put that off another two weeks, unfortunately, but you know, our thoughts and prayers go with Erin and her family. And then also, if we could move item 29 and 30 up to the top of the agenda, Anne has a meeting with Martin Heft that she needs to attend. So she asked if we could move her forward. Do I have a?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
It's unanimous, and a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
It's unanimous. Thank you. And then there are the minutes of the regular meeting held July 23rd. Are there any additions or corrections?
Here's a super tiny correction.
Okay.
You just need amended agenda, item 21 up to $70,000 should be a dollar sign.
Okay.
I was channeling my inner penny ration.
There you go. No comment.
She's good at that.
Yes, she is. Okay. Public com- oh, so could I get a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
So moved.
Second.
It's unanimous. Thank you. Public comments. Members of the public are welcome to provide comments to the Board of Selectmen on agenda topics scheduled for review and/or vote. Comments submitted electronically should be sent to the following email address: bosdistribution@newcanonct.gov. Do you have anyone wishing to make public comments this morning? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to the new item 20. Anne, can you come forward on item 29, purchase orders? And Cheryl, thank you.
Thank you for moving it up for me. So the purchase of- I'll let Cheryl, we had, there's a couple of purchase orders that go across different departments, but they usually come under somewhat under finance, and we group them together. Sun Life is our stop-loss vendor, which I'll turn it over to Cheryl to talk about.
So our broker went out and bid our stop-loss. He had had eight different agencies who bid on it. We do this in conjunction with the Board of Ed. This was the, we are looking at a savings of about $500,000 between the Board of Ed and the town for stop-loss. So we will be moving, yes. So we, the Board of Ed is on a higher note than we are, but we felt it was important for both of us to move. So we will be leaving Voya and moving over to Sun Life as of, well, we moved as of July 1st.
$500,000?
Mm-hmm.
Same, same coverage and everything?
Same coverage, yep. Stop-loss is, I guess, a crazy world to be in, and it's just going out and bidding, and they look back for all of us for the past 18 months, and we've done pretty well in regards to stop-loss. So we did very well with the, with the new one.
Our old vendor got outbid.
Yes.
So is it because the old vendor has more experience with us, and we get a new vendor?
Correct. They're dealing with the losses of previous years that they have to cover.
It's been done this at the Board of Ed multiple times. You do need to move stop-loss.
Every two years, they bid it out, and this was by far the best. So.
Yeah, that's a nice budget delta.
I know. Is it, is it too early in the same venue to talk about our Karma good news? I mean, it's unrelated, but.
Uh, no, we will be getting a check for over $50,000 back from Karma for our claims and how well we've been doing with our workers' comp and lab. So that check will be coming next week. So.
Yeah, so.
Good trend.
Okay. The next one is Tyler, our Munis is our financial software for $12,000. We're doing two different modules right now. We're implementing a new contracts module. What that will allow us to do is track our construction contracts, anything that'll have retainage, things like that, that we have to track from an accounting perspective, but to get all those contracts in one place, their agreements in one place as we go through, but it also works on the other side of revenue. So if we have revenue contracts that we have, the playhouse rent or things like that that go on, we're going to have now a centralized location that at any point, anybody that has access to that system or that module will be able to see our outstanding contracts, what's left on contracts, as opposed to keeping things on Excel spreadsheets and things like that. So that's one. And the other one is on a.
So would that also, I mean, I know you're just kind of, would that actually be able to give us a window of how we're doing on each of our construction projects in terms of building them out?
Yeah, so you would put in the original contract, set it up with retainage, everything that it would do, and so long as, as we're paying the invoices or setting up POs, whatever it is, the contract amount that's assessed when you set up that contract originally is on that invoice, it will go into that module every time. So you can look at any point in time and say, here's the original, here's what we spent, here's change orders, here's what's outstanding in retainage, which should be on my balance sheet, things like that. So you would be able to see at that point in time.
If you were a reality project.
Yes.
In terms of spend.
Yes.
Versus what we expected.
Yes.
Great.
So, and it's just because for, for me, I have, we have to contract a lot of leases, contracts. Retainage is a big thing for us. It's a very manual process right now. So this is going to help us. And the cost is the upfront cost, but then it's only on an annual basis. It's $1,300 for that management of that. And I think it's for us to be able to have that depository of everything in one place. The other side is our fixed assets, which we've been working with for a while to bring in-house. We're just moving it into our live environment. It's a one-time-only fee to get it into our, the live versus where we are, and they do the whole upload and everything for us. So I'm looking for that. New Canaan Public Access, this is our Channel 79 budgeted item that we put in there and annually give to them. So we're looking for approval on that one. The New Canaan Volunteer Ambulance, this is our, this is in our budget as well. It's broken down into two pieces, vehicle repair for about $10,000 and medical supplies for about $5,600. And then the Norwalk EMS, oh, sorry, $56,000. Yes, thank you. Norwalk EMS, that is our annual for paramedics, but I do need to have one change here with the typo. Instead of 525.6, it's actually 465, 465 even. So I just want to update that number for the approval.
Okay.
Keep going. You keep the.
So I'd be looking for approval of all these.
Questions?
That final, that final amount is, is the agreement we have with Norwalk Hospital.
Exactly.
The sharing of EMTs or ambulance, is that the, is that?
Paramedic service, so that we have it on file with Norwalk.
Yep. Okay. And do we, do we shop that at all as far as like difference between Stanford and Norwalk, or where, that Norwalk is closest, obviously. So that's who we've been using over, over the years. So.
Back to you on that. I'm not sure if that's something that's shopped out or whether it's required within an area, but I'll get that back to you on it.
And is it one paramedic 24/7 or?
No, it's multiples.
It's multiples.
Yeah.
I mean, I didn't need one person.
On call for us.
Right, but it's one person.
Well, yeah, we only get one.
Yes, yes. It's not the same person 24/7. It's one person.
Right, but it's not, are there situations where we need a second paramedic to pull somebody in, like we have two?
I don't, that's another question I'll bring up. No, we'll get that one too.
I'm sure they have.
How it works.
Right, right.
We'll get that to you.
Paramedics, what answers questions?
Oh, yes, thank you. Thank you.
I was in the other room listening, and so they did a review, I believe it was last year, between Stanford and Norwalk, and ended up staying with Norwalk for a number of reasons. They have a longstanding relationship, a good, and what they do, Norwalk provides 24/7 ALS, Advanced Life Support, so paramedic level versus EMT, which is what our volunteers are, 24/7, one paramedic coverage. And then if they're running a call, we also then get mutual aid, paramedics that come from Norwalk Hospital to cover if we have multiple, which we do regularly have multiple calls at the same time. So the paramedics are able to use medications and all sorts of things that regular EMTs can't do. So.
So, so in the situation where we have two calls going out and you need two paramedics, is this within that contract, or do we have to?
Yes.
All right.
And is the mutual aid, because I know, like, do we have to pay an additional fee for mutual aid or no?
I don't believe so. I don't want to speak out of place. I haven't seen the actual contract itself, but I do know that every day, it seems like there's at least one point where we end up with two calls simultaneous, whether it's ALS or BLS, the level of a call. But they do respond from Norwalk and cover our town in those situations. And EMS is amazing because they've really had a lot of success in being able to staff not just one, but you know, sometimes two rigs 24/7, which is really incredible for them. Yeah, all volunteer.
Great.
Okay. Any other questions?
Appreciate it.
If there are no further questions, I would ask for a motion to approve a request from the Finance Department to approve the following FY25 purchase orders. Sun Life, $1,130,000. Tyler from Munis, $12,000 annually. New Canaan Public Access, $40,500. New Canaan Volunteer Ambulance Corps, $66,640. And Norwalk EMS with an edited $465,000.
So moved.
Second.
It's unanimous. Thank you. And then moving on to volunteer tax abatement.
For to add to it for the dollar amount of $1,045.33, it's going against a person's vehicle, and I'm looking for approval for, this has been vetted, it's a volunteer first responder, it's been vetted to their, their entities to make sure that these people are in compliance, eligible, and that he's been approved.
Any questions? Okay. Then if I could get a motion to approve a request for the abatement of real and/or personal property taxes due July 1, 2024, as per our ordinance, property tax abatement and other benefits for volunteer first responders in the amount of $1,045.33 approved by the Town Council on June 17, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
It's unanimous. Thank you, Anne.
Thanks, Anne.
Have fun with Martin Heft.
Come back more with those type of meetings.
So great. Okay, so moving on, tax assessor purchase order. Is Sebby here? No, Anne? Okay.
Oh, good.
It's going to be $10,000. So Quality Data Service is what they call his Kama system. The Kama system is what he handles for his assessment program. So every year, he has a contracted amount for that software program to, to manage him, like my financial system, he has quality. So he's looking for approval for that annual software services.
Any questions? Could I get a motion then to approve a request from the Tax Assessor to approve a purchase order with Quality Data Service, Inc., in the amount of $20,900 for the, for software services, books, et cetera?
So moved.
Second.
It's unanimous. Thank you.
We'd love to have Sebby back when he's available.
I know.
We don't see him enough.
I know. I go visit him quite a bit these days.
It'd be nice to get, you know, it's just nice to have him.
Yeah, no.
Give him a data report.
Yeah, that's great. Okay, Police Officer Compensation. Is Paul on the line?
I am. Good morning.
Hi.
Hey, Paul. Fortunately, I'm out of town and on vacation, so.
Can we see you, or is it, you're not?
No, you're not going to see me.
Oh, we're not going to see you. Okay.
Nope. It's 5:30 in the morning out here, and you're not going to see me.
That's why you get paid the big bucks, Paul.
I only want to be presentable to the Board of Selectmen.
Okay. All right. Well, so you're up.
Okay, what we're, what the Commission has asked for is an increase for Deputy Chief Walsh and Captain Frank of, from 2 and 3/4% to 3%. And for Chief De Federico, going from 2 and 3/4 to 3 and 1/2%. So it's 25 basis points for the, for two of our staff and 75 for the chief. And it just brings them into more of a, it isn't even quite where other departments are, but it gets them bumped up a bit. And it also sends a message to our staff that, to the regular, you know, younger professionals, that there is some room for a compensation increase. And what we're trying to do is to instill that into them so that they take the sergeant's exams and takes the lieutenant's exam so that they can move up professionally as well as, professionally as well as in compensation. So it's a, it's a pretty minor increase, but it's, it's, it's a message we're trying to send, and a positive message we're trying to send to the, to the force.
So Paul, you know, I don't have, thanks. I don't have a lot of background information on this. So there was 2 and 3 quarter built into the current budget. Is that correct?
That's right.
And so for those of us not really up to speed on, you know, kind of the compensation issue, I mean, is there, is there information, like background information showing how our guys are paid versus comparable towns and?
Yes, we, we have that.
In terms of, do you guys annually look at compensation issues for the non-union members of the staff? I mean, just how's it work? Because all I get is just a number here in terms?
Yes, we, yes, we review local towns, local towns by size. Also, we look at the larger towns too, just because, you know, people can move, you know, pretty, every day they can move to another town. So we, we just want to be aware of what those numbers are. Unfortunately, being on vacation, I just don't have my file with me. I'm certainly at home in my home office.
Cheryl, I asked Cheryl to come forward.
Oh, good. Thank you.
So the Police Commission came forward. We actually met with the career staff and looked at all the area towns. We are low compared to Darien. We are high compared to some others. So I think, as Paul said, we did a look at all of Fairfield County, and with Deanna, we felt that the numbers that the Commission had originally come in with were a little high. We asked them to go back, and now they have come forward with a different increase, which we were comfortable with. So the chief was 3.5%, the deputy chief was three, and the captain was three.
And just so you know, Cheryl and, and her department reached out to CCM as well to get comps on salaries in the area to.
Conserve that.
Yeah, to get, I have, you know, and I printed off an email this morning right before coming.
No, and I said to Paul, because he's not here, we, we, he should, we probably should have put a packet together.
Yeah.
So that you can see that. But I will definitely send you, the chief did one, and I did one, and then we got together to review them.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I just, I mean, it doesn't sound unreasonable. I just don't have any background information to say, oh, I feel comfortable versus, and it's, so like, it's in the current budget, do we have built-in 2.75% increases?
Correct.
So what's, what's the, the dollar amount of the differential on this? And then where would it, where would it come from in the budget? Paul, do you want to talk about that? Where's it coming from?
Yeah, we, what we will do is go through line item by line item, and it's, again, it's, we're talking a few thousand dollars here is, is what we're talking. Again, I don't have it in, right in front of me because it's at home, but I can assure you, yeah. And Cheryl and I have worked together on this.
We spoke this morning, and if you would feel more comfortable, what we can do is I will work with him to put a packet together. We can come forward on the 20th, so you will have the exact numbers in front of you.
That'd be great.
Yeah, I mean, I would prefer that. Not that anything sounds unreasonable. I just don't have any basis for saying sure. I mean, I think you're, you're a little closer to it, but.
No, it's fair. It's very fair.
And it doesn't come from HR, it comes from the Commission because of how the Charter lays it out. And so in speaking with Paul this morning, we agreed that we can put that together and bring it forward.
Right.
Can I ask you, what at the Police Commission, is this, do you guys look at these compensation issues annually to make sure we're, and I understand the importance of making sure career staff people, you know, are paid competitively because, you know, other folks can do overtime, and you want to encourage people going to administration. But I'm just wondering from the Commission, what is the process? Because Cheryl, you obviously have a process for compensation for everybody. What is the process for you guys in, is this like a, every year you take a looksee at it, or?
Yeah, yeah, pretty much. Because, you know, you, you want to be sure that you're not losing good people to, to other towns and/or to other states, and you want to be sure you're competitive. And we take, take a look at that, you know, fairly regularly. If not, it's, I don't think more than right, more than annually, but annually, sure.
And it would make sense to me in terms of your cycle, if you can look at that in a way so that we build it into the budget. I mean, obviously, this is a big delta, but it would make life easier. So.
Paul, is, is that ongoing overtime issue that we've had for decades, i- is that really causing sort of a backlog of folks that want to stay in those positions and not move into administration? I mean, is that?
Sure. That's a, you can make, frankly, you can make more with overtime, and, and there are people who will stay there rather than go into administration because you can make substantially more. And it's not overtime necessarily that the town is paying, but, you know, working, you know, getting just side jobs with Eversource or Aquarium and other things like that, where you can't get that as a, as a staff member.
Is the Commission looking at trying to change that? I mean, we've had so many great officers over the years that would have been perfect for these positions. What, what can we do to try to encourage those guys other than keep raising the salary? Is there anything else we can do?
There, there isn't, not that we've been able to come up with, but it's certainly a, a topic that the, the Commission talks about regularly, because we're concerned about. We, you know, we want to keep our professionals. We, we've got great people throughout, up and down the department. And when you're running any organization, you want to keep them, right? You want to, you want to keep making them happy and come to work every day and, and, and stay. And this is just part of it. So, yeah.
I think also, Paul, each time we do have new command shift, we do look at their contracts and see if there's something that we can be offering them, such as the drop plan we have just offered to the command staff, which is a different retirement plan for them that was all approved. So that's a new incentive. So I think as we get app and we try to look at what other towns are doing.
Well, with the overtime, are, are, you know, senior officers given priority and overtime? And so you sort of exacerbate a, a problem where they're the highest paid officers who also get the most overtime. And so you sort of create this widening gap between administrative staff and senior officers.
Right. And that's part of the, the contract, you know, on their, on their bidding, on who gets to bid. Yeah.
Something to look at, you know, because it, you won't get out of this cycle if the most senior officers constantly get the most overtime. So, I mean, I'm, it's something to seriously look at.
Yep. And Cheryl and I will talk about that when I get back into town.
Yep. How many non-union positions are there?
Well, we have the three command staff, and then we have six that work within the department.
Non-officers, right.
Non-officers, okay. Yeah. So, so of the 50 officers, three, right. So, so there are also limited opportunities, honestly, for, for people to move in.
Well, something, something like creating a pool where overtime somehow of a percentage of, of the overtime flows into an account for the, for the administrative side, even if it was like 2%, 3% where you could start a fund that would fund and create, you know, give these guys a sort of a piece of everything else that's going on out there. And that's, to me, let somebody else pay for it.
That's interesting. No, that's a, yeah, that's a, I like, I like that thought.
Okay.
I like that thought. Okay.
All right.
We'll table that, yes.
Well, thanks for getting here so early.
That'll be in two weeks.
Paul, I'll talk to you soon.
Thanks, Cheryl.
Bye. Thanks.
All right. Chief, oh. Okay. Joe, are you?
I'm here as well. I'm here as well. I can speak to the next.
Oh, okay, John. Sorry, chief. Next Gen Annual Contracts.
Yes, this is our records management system for all of our record-keeping and report-writing. It's just an annual contract that we get in with, with our, this company, Next Gen, who's not only our department, but compatible with many other departments, including the state police. So it's our records management system that we use for, for decades, and this is just the annual contract we know.
Any questions? All right. If I could get a motion to approve a request from the New Canaan Police Department to enter into three annual contracts with Nick as follows. Next Gen Information Management Software, $23,283.08. Next Gen E-Ticketing Services, $2,500. And Next Gen Reporting Writing Module, $950.
So moved.
Second.
It's unanimous. Thank you. Thank you. Enjoy your time.
Thank you.
Alvy.
Good morning. The Fire Department will, is requesting approval to enter into a blanket purchase order with an amount not to exceed $38,000 with FireMatic Supply for personal protective clothing and equipment. We currently have two purchase orders, or two quotes that we'd like purchase orders for. Under that, if you need those, I can give you the exact amounts. One's $11,316.42, and the other is $7,544.28. But further purchases of turnout here will bring us to that $38,000 for the year.
And thank you for budgeting for the entire year with this. I appreciate it, and we all appreciate it. Hopefully, this, this system works well for the, the coming year.
And this is in the 2025 budget already, right?
This is 2025 capital, and actually, one, the smaller amounts coming out of our reimbursement account from the state for Merritt Parkway Falls.
Okay.
So I mean, the, the cost, you know, just looking at the cost of the, like, their coats.
Outrageous.
It's, it's unbelievable, actually. I mean, obviously, they're amazing, you know, what you can walk into a burning building with them, but that is a, that's a big number.
And it's a 10-year service life on it. And now they're, we're looking at, we actually bought trial gear prior to this for, you know, P-phosphory and particulate filtering. So that'll drive the cost up down the road, I would assume, but that's where we are now.
So when you, you, you obviously have the, our officers have the names on the backs of these jackets. If somebody either moves on or retires or whatever, or you have a 10-year jacket, you're able to put a new name on the back and.
Yeah, we reissue them. Those are just Velcroed on, the names are actually Velcroed on, but the, as long as it's within a couple inches of their size, we can reissue. Most of our, even our stuff that's over 10 years gets issued to probationary members, the volunteers that have to go through class and stuff, so they can wear non-compliant gear up to the point that they have to do a live burn.
Do they continue to make that stuff lighter? I mean, years ago, it was so heavy. Is it, are they getting any better?
All depends on the spec, on, on how it is, yeah. But it's reasonably, right now, it's not as waterproof as it used to be with the PFOS removed. But, um, you know, they're working on some new technology.
Well, I hope you never have to use that walking into a brain.
Obviously. Yeah. All right.
Any other questions? If not, if I could get a motion to approve a request from the Fire Department to approve a blanket purchase order in the amount not to exceed $38,000 with FireMatic Supply in order to provide firefighter personal protective clothing and equipment.
So moved.
So it's unanimous. Thank you very much. And then.
Our second approval is the purchase and installation of the Ply-Move magnetic nozzle system by air cleaning specialists, not to exceed 13,500. This is actually a retrofit to our current system, which is a air-based system, how it attaches to the apparatus. We're switching to a magnet-based system, which would take a whole lot of maintenance out of our, our, our system, and then also be in service more than it's out when it springs air leaks. So that's, we want to switch to that based on cancer reduction. We'll have better contact with the exhaust pipe and the apparatus to go this route.
And it's on all the vehicles you do?
Yes, so everything that's parked in. Yes. So everything that's parked inside the building. Seven. There'll be seven, it'll be seven drops and, uh, each one would be able to go in any space. So it's, alls we're doing is changing the air, how it attaches with air to the exhaust pipe. We're using magnets to, uh, go to the exhaust pipes.
I feel like you presented this previously, like not, not to get money, but maybe during budget cycle? Cause I remember.
Budgets, yeah, this was in.
I remember us specifically talking about this item.
For, um, for the retrofit.
How, how long do the, the engines run inside the building? You know, how, they.
Not long. I mean, they, I mean, we, with the exhaust system, we can run them a little longer in the building, which is nice. Cause we have no apron to pull out on, obviously. Uh, but, um, it's really the startup of the apparatus. Doesn't matter how long it runs. It's the black smoke that comes out initially on the, um, on the initial startup.
And do you have to, with the magnetic system, do you manually have to pull them off or can you actually drive out?
They drive right out and once they hit the end, they, they disconnect.
Great.
All built into the system.
Too bad gas pumps at gas stations. Okay. Great.
Any other questions? If not, if I could get a motion to approve a request from the fire department to approve the purchase and installation of a Ply-Move Vent, by moment, magnetic nozzle system by air cleaning specialists in the amount not to exceed thirteen thousand, five hundred dollars for exhaust capture.
Same move.
Second, unanimous. Thank you.
Have a great day.
Sarah.
I'm just gonna share my screen real quick. All right. I've been making the rounds to a bunch of commissions. So figured it was your turn to hear the spiel about the P O C D. Or so first, real quickly, these are some photos from the photo contest we got. Um, we received like a hundred and thirty photos or something like that. So plan's looking really good. If you've had the chance to read it yet, um. So, um, as you all know, as you all know, this has been a year-long process with many different phases of plan development that you all have been, you know, involved with, which we, you know, the subcommittee greatly appreciates. I know you all are reading the plan right now, sending me comments, which it's great to have extra set of eyes on the plan. Um, and so, you know, this slide just really illustrates, um, we've kind of had like a 12-step process almost to develop the plan. And the green circles represent, um, times where we needed input from the public, um, before we went in and started developing the actual plan itself. So, you know, this just really shows that from when we started last September, the public, staff, commissions have been involved through every single step of the process. So the plan that we have today, um, really is a community document that we feel myself and the subcommittee is, um, you know, reflecting all the diverse, you know, perspectives that everyone in New Canaan holds. And so today, the, um, green circle with the blue dot in the center, we're in the 65-day public comment period, which started on July 17th and runs through September 20th. Um, and that is a state mandated public comment period before the Planning and Zoning Commission can actually approve the, um, the plan. And so that's a time where the public, the legislative body of the municipality, so town council and West Cog, um, have the opportunity to provide feedback. Town council has to either endorse or reject the plan. So we're in the middle of that process as we speak, and then in fall, the P and Z commission plans to adopt the full plan.
So Sarah, in, in this 65-day period, um, if people read it and give you comments like they're giving.
Correct. Yeah.
And, and that, um, the subcommittee then looks at those comments and determines whether to put it into the final plan or not.
Correct. So, yeah. So when the 65-day comment period ends, um, either the subcommittee or the full commission, depending on how involved the comments are, will, you know, have their own separate meeting. And then once that's all ironed out, there will be a final adoption, public hearing, um, where the edits will have been incorporated into the plan and then you're formally voting on the.
And then that relies on town council to formally.
No. So Planning and Zoning formally adopts the P O C D. Town council has to either endorse or reject the plan. Um, if they reject the plan, P and Z can still approve it if they so choose. You know, we, we're hoping to avoid that, you know, if they have edits, you know, planning and zoning will take them into full consideration. Um, but so since the 65-day comment period started, just to give you all some updates on what's been going on since July 17th, town council, as you may have heard, has elected to hold two meetings, a special meeting on August 26th. And Tucker, correct me if I'm wrong on those dates, but I think that's what, um, has been officially decided. One to discuss the plan, um, and to recommend potential edits. And then September 4th is a public hearing and planning and zoning will also have its own separate public hearing, but we just haven't selected a date yet. Cause again, we're, we want to wait to see how involved the comments are that we get back. And then this is breaking news on Thursday of last week, West Cog, um, finalized their review of the plan. They, you know, complimented us. They said it was excellent. They had three very minor edits that we planned to incorporate in the plan and they found it consistent with West Cog and the state's, um, P O C D. So that was really important and good feedback to receive.
That was a surprise that West Cog actually weighs in on a town's, uh.
Yep.
It seems like it's our, our deal and yeah, but it's, I guess their job is to make sure that the state side of it is covered. Is that, is that accurate?
And West Cog also has their own regional P O C D, which is, you know, supposed to reflect the goals of the region. So they're also just trying to make sure that they're on the same page with the member municipalities, um, which typically, you know, it, it is kind of a formality, but you know, it's, it's important to have those checks and balances.
It'd be surprising if they came back with like pages of edits.
Exactly. Okay. So then just to really quickly, I know, I know Gianna's read through the whole plan, um, but so just to make sure everyone, um, understands the format of the plan. And if you're reading it, you're not confused about this, you know, very dense document. So we have, um, nine chapters. We start with an introduction followed by New Canaan Today, which essentially summarizes existing demographic and land use conditions and analyzes that data and really, um, helped us inform ourselves before we broke into, you know, proposed action steps in the later chapters. So we have a vision and community theme chapter, which is essentially a statement of the municipality's goals. Um, and was the subject of an online survey we did in the winter, like March or February of this past year. Um, and then we have the theme chapters, which are the main portion of the plan and are all the suggested action items for the future. We then have the future land use plan, which is meant to guide the Planning and Zoning Commission when making edits to its zoning regulations and zoning map. And then the final chapter is to confirm consistency with the state and regional plans. So we do have four main theme chapters. Um, this is pulled straight from the plan. Um, I'm not going to read too deeply into it for you all, but the four main themes, um, are preserve New Canaan's welcoming small town identity, promote creative, balanced development, embrace sustainability and resiliency, and then enhance community infrastructure and facilities. And I'm, while all four are important to you, I assume for your purposes, probably, um, theme number four, enhanced community infrastructure and facilities is probably the one that you'll see the most, um, you know, in your time on the board of selectmen in the future. So the theme chapters, which, you know, make up the majority of the plan, the structure of them, just so you all understand. There are a lot of buzzwords, but they are intentional, I promise. Um, so again, this photo, um, comes straight from the plan, but essentially each theme has a rationale at the beginning of the chapter and contains multiple goals, which are broad ambitions relating to a specific topic within the theme. These goals have their own rationale and then have multiple strategies listed within each goal that further refine, you know, how we could attain each goal. And then underneath each strategy, there are targeted and unique actions and policies that the town can employ when implementing the plan. And then just so you all understand, that structure essentially looks like this within the plan. So this is pulled straight from theme four. You know, we have a hundred and eighty-six proposed actions in the plan. So it's definitely a lot to digest, but, um, I just wanted to pull an example for you are. And so this is in theme for the, um, enhanced community infrastructure and facilities. The first goal of that theme is maintain and enhance community facilities and services. And then the first strategy within that is maintain existing community facilities and enhance those who are aging. So you have two policies that the town should consider, you know, implementing throughout all of its boards and commissions where relevant. And then we have four suggested actions that the town over 10 years can take to achieve that strategy and goal. So then this is the future land use plan. Um, there's a lot of text that goes with it, but, um, that, that explains the map further. But this portion of the plan is one of the main requirements in statute that we are required to have. And for New Canaan's purposes, this essentially mirrors our zoning map that exists today. We're not proposing anything that reinvents the wheel or anything. The only thing I want to note is the inset map, which is of downtown. I don't know if we can move the box of the zoom out of the way, cause it's kind of blocking it. No, it's okay if we can't, um. But essentially we're, again, this is just in the future land use plan, planning and zoning won't necessarily do this, but they are considering implementing a transit-oriented development zone, which would have a specific radius to, um, the train station. And so this shows just on a map, what a quarter mile radius from the train station is and what a half mile radius to the train station is. And the state is pushing towns to adopt TODs, um, and you know, for New Canaan's purposes, a reason why it may be advantageous is in the last legislative session, um, the state has ruled that if you adopt a TOD and you permit middle housing, which is three to five units of housing, um, by right, you get moratorium points for market rate units. So, you know, it's just something to consider and it just gives us another tool in our toolbox to, you know, address the affordable housing issue and, you know, getting moratorium points. So I just wanted to highlight that. We're not really proposing anything too crazy. It essentially mirrors the zoning map. Um, but for our purposes, this is probably the most important part of the plan.
Put that in writing as far as the points and that, that's an existing piece of legislation.
Yeah.
Is it a quarter mile or half mile?
So it, it just says TOD in the.
Whatever the, the TOD is determined to be in each town.
Yeah. So I mean, there are, you know, it is vague and there are a lot of, you know, items that still have to be ironed out, but it's just, it essentially says, if you establish a TOD and you allow middle housing units, you can get moratorium points. But there are a lot of logistical questions still, um, about, you know, are there any catches to what sounds so good? But we figured we would put it in the plan to.
As we found, as we've gone from our.
Yes. Okay. And then just, um, to wrap it up, um, implementation of the P O C D. Um, there will be an implementation table that will assign entities responsible for all 186 action steps. We have in the plan with a recommended completion date. Um, I'm currently drafting that table and will be reaching out to relevant staff over the next couple of weeks, um, before we release it to the public, just to make sure we're all on the same page. Um, but it will be available ahead of town council's meetings in late August and early September. Um, and then the Planning and Zoning Commission does plan to create an implementation committees similar to what was done in 2014. The timing of that hasn't been fully ironed out yet. We're, you know, more worried about just adopting the plan, um, before we get into that. But we did that, they had it in 2014 and it was really successful. So we do plan to mirror that again. And then for the planning and zoning.
Sarah, just, just to step back with the implementation committee, those were members of the community in addition to planning and zoning members, not just.
Correct. So for planning and zoning's purposes, you know, next up, this impacts every function that they have. How you review applications before the commission, you know, what sort of zoning regulation updates you want to make. When Tiger comes to us with eight 24 reviews for, um, you know, municipal improvements, this is what the commission's looking at. So, you know, the commission now has to shift and, you know, move on from the 2014 plan and make sure that they're understanding of the 2024 plan. So it will impact everything, but the plan hasn't changed, like the goals haven't changed that much from 2014 to 2024, but it will, you know, impact some things. And then the Planning and Zoning Commission, once they finish this, is planning to do a comprehensive review and update of the zoning regulations throughout calendar year 2025. They haven't really been touched in 20 years, so it's just time to take another look at them. And I, I did a quick calculation. If we do the zoning regulation update, that should address about 45% of the, um, recommended actions in the P O C D. So that's.
Sarah, how does, um, how, she said, it's been like 25 years since we updated. How does it actually work in terms of updating the zoning regulations? Where, who makes the decision?
It's all the Planning and Zoning Commission.
They have complete.
Correct.
Complete authority on that. That's interesting.
So there's no, that, that would not run through legislative or executive?
It's all planning and zoning.
That's big. And my assumption is that there would be a heck of a lot of community input and, cause that's a lot for a non-elected body to have, cause there, there's nothing more fundamental than P and Z in terms of what the town looks like and how it, you know.
Definitely. Yeah. And so just so you all understand, when it was last updated, um, they were adopted in 2007. The process started in 2003. So it, it took them for, they, they adopted them in 2005. There were a lot of, you know, issues that they had to work out after the first adoption. So everything was not fully finalized until four years after they started. So it's, it's a long process. We, there will definitely be a lot of public hearings. It's just, it's come to our attention that it's, it's time to refresh them.
Yeah.
I seem to recall that wasn't exactly the smoothest process in the world back in 05. I don't know. It took a lot.
Cause I wasn't paying attention.
Yeah, I mean.
Did you, did you ever address it on the town council, even though you didn't have any authority? Did you ever?
It's, it'll become a public discussion. So, and, and the, and the direction is going to be pretty clear. I mean, they're not going to do anything crazy.
I mean, the, the plan isn't to, you know, change anything fundamental. It's just, a lot of it will be administratively on the backend where we'll see the difference, which is where there are issues right now.
Personally, having watched every planning and zoning meeting since I was elected, I heard this, this, um, sort of drumbeat over and over. We need to review our planning and zoning, you know, uh, document and, and sort of make updates to it. So, um.
But to be clear, changes happen over time, right? I mean, it's not like we've been stagnated for 20 years. It's, you know, there's been.
Been completely stagnant, but unfortunately with the volume of applications that have just been ongoing for a while, most of the changes have been driven by applicants, not by the commission. So it, it's time for the changes to be driven by.
Meaning the applicant gets variance.
No. So, so the variances are two separate things from the regulations. Applicants can go and make applications to change the zoning regulations to make it work for their project. And that, that's where most of the zoning changes have been in the last 15, 20 years.
And then this, I mean, P and Z is so busy dealing with what's in front of them. They don't get a chance to step back and be, you know, look at themselves. I mean, it's pretty interesting that they don't spend a lot of time on that. So.
Well, we're trying to change that. So, we do. Are there any other questions for me about the plan?
But if, if people have a chance to read the plan, if you really kind of want to understand all the nuance of the town, it's a really great document because it, you know, cause we all just kind of like exist. But if you want to look back and say, wow, okay, this is where the water issues is. This is where the land issue is. This is where the transportation is. This is how many people here. It's a really great document to understand the town.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, and the, and the committee that was put together did an amazing job. I mean, from, from the beginning, the survey, the, the open houses, everything's been really well-received by the town. And, and, you know, I was talking to John Cris last week about reviewing the numbers that came back on that's original survey was amazing. I mean, it's, this is a town that cares about what goes on. And, and you can tell by, by folks that weighed in on that survey. So.
So thank you, Sarah, for your leadership on this process and helping push the ball forward with the, you know, with the P O C D committee of the planning and zoning. It's been a really, um, well orchestrated process.
Thank you.
Yeah. And if you haven't heard about, if you're a resident, you haven't heard about it. It's, you've been under a rock. It's been all over the place. So, thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thanks, Sarah. Okay. Um, parking department, Stacy.
Good morning. Um, parking department is requesting approval of a purchase order with Pay by Phone, the mobile app in the amount of forty-eight thousand dollars to cover the monthly billing for the Pay by Phone banking and transaction fees. So to give you a little background on, uh, this request, Pay by Phone is the mobile app that we use to pay for parking throughout the town. This includes the train stations as well as all the in-town machines. The way it works is a user will go into the lot, they will pay for the amount of time that, um, they want to park. And at that time, they're charged a 30 cent convenience fee through Pay by Phone and any additional fees that they have set up through their account. So if they want to set up an email confirmation, if they want to send up an alert that their space is expiring, that's an additional 20 cents per service. All of that is directly deposited at the time into the town's account. Uh, and eventually it will go into the town's revenue account for parking. At the end of the month, Pay by Phone will send me an invoice and they want their convenience fees back that they gave us. At the end of the month, Pay by Phone will send me an invoice and they want their convenience fees back that they gave us. That is where this comes in. So at the end of the month, they will send me an invoice depending on the uses and the convenience fees that they already sent to us. And I will send them, I will put through to finance the that invoice and they will get paid back their transaction fees at the end of the month. It comes from our banking and transaction fee account.
So this is really not an expense. It's a, it's a net zero. We get the revenue.
Correct.
We just have to get the.
Correct. So it used to go into, goes into the revenue account and I used to take it and bill it from the revenue account. That has changed. Now it cannot come from a revenue. It needs to come from an expense account. So that is why it's coming from this banking and transaction fee account. Just to make you aware, it is also separated because a portion of it comes from the general, the general account of banking and transaction fees. And then a portion of it comes from the railroad fund banking and transaction fee account. Because anything that, any usage for parking at the train station needs to come from the railroad fund account. So it's separated, but it's one blanket purchase order because it's the same company.
And so the the four assumed four thousand dollars a month, right? Because it's forty eight thousand, right?
Well.
So where we think it ends up? I'm sorry. Is it just kind of, because it's 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 the convenience fee that's.
Correct. So average, we'll take the in-town machines, average on a monthly average, it's between nineteen hundred and twenty one hundred per month. So I gave myself a little bit of wiggle room because some months are a little higher depending, you know, holiday time, we get higher. Out. So overall, that cost will break it down to about thirty six thousand for the general fund banking transaction fee account. And then for the railroad, it it breaks down to about twelve thousand because it runs about nine hundred to a thousand dollars a month for just the railroad usage. Keep in mind that with the railroad, the reason it's so so much less is because a user will only pay once per day. They go into work, they use it, they get the thirty cents convenience fee and the twenty cents for any additional service. Whereas in the intern, in-town lots, somebody could do the initial payment, then want to add time. That's an additional thirty cents, an additional twenty cents for another alert. So the the number of times the turnover that's used in the in-town lots are a lot more. That's why it's higher.
And is the marketing for this this app, just on the on the iron mics or, you know, how would residents know how to get the app to?
So we have signs up in the lots. Okay, we have all the information on our websites. A lot of people are very familiar with it with the train station. So the word is is getting out there.
Usually QR code that you just take a picture of and.
No, no, actually, they they just have to, they have to download the app at this this point. The, when the signs were created, they they didn't do the QR codes. That's an all new. So it might might require looking into seeing if they could update the signs.
Yeah, that makes things like easier because.
Yeah, they just do it on there and it opens it up. So that will be something looking into moving forward too.
Yeah. I mean, you want to encourage people to use that because it's, A, it's convenient and, you know, the the updates, if somebody's in a in a store or restaurant, they get delayed, they can, they can, you know.
It is getting used more and more than the machines itself. We're finding that the younger generation, they don't even go to the machines.
So if they sign up for that app and and they've paid by the app, if they pay for the alert, that's the one that will tell them that they're.
Time is.
Otherwise, they have to, they have to remember it. That's.
People, I will say, sign up for it, but again, pay by phone. It used to be included with.
They saw an opportunity to make more revenue.
Yeah, you know, it's kind of annoying that you, it's kind of annoying that you have to pay to get.
That's a company thing.
I'm just saying other places they don't. So anyways.
Changing is the convenience fee. That'll always stay that, but it used to be incorporated into everything and then costs, you know, went up and they started.
Opportunity.
And and opportunity, yeah.
I mean, when I saw that number, I said, that's a lot of money to do nothing, basically. I mean, you know, this is, you know, thirty cents, they're just getting a sweep every time. How competitive is this industry?
Thirty cents is very competitive. The surrounding towns, some of the surrounding towns are thirty five cents for their apps, some forty five cents I've seen.
We should write a.
You know.
I'll give that to you. I'll give that to you.
Mike says.
You go to like.
We got to develop something.
Okay. It's just, there's no convenience fee. You just pay for the parking and then they let you know if you had to, there's no thirty. There's no like.
So what do you pay for that fee?
You just, you go, yeah, you have to, you, two hours is a buck, right?
No, no, but I mean.
But no, there's no. But yeah.
No, but I mean.
That's a parking expense, but there's no fee associated with letting you know you need to add more parking.
They may have built it in though, and you don't know it.
They should build it.
Yeah. If, because I did, did did a surrounding town way back when they broke this out. The majority of the towns do, their mobile apps do break out the additional fees. Or it's incorporated into the initial convenience fee. So that's why they're charging forty five cents.
Or it could be incorporated into the cost of parking, right? So you don't have this, it feels nickel and dime. I just say.
Although then you get to make a choice as a consumer, I can make my own choice and say, I don't want to be alerted and I'll save twenty cents.
And I'll save the twenty cents.
Having choice, not being told what I have to take.
So to be clear though, if someone uses the app, is it more expensive or the same walking up to the iron mic? I mean, are.
More expensive. It's thirty cents more. Or if they sign up for the alerts, it's.
Yeah, but you shouldn't, it shouldn't be that way. If it's convenient, it should be convenient, it should be getting.
But we have to pay a vendor to have that, you know.
So how long is our contract with this vendor?
How do we, we want.
I, we signed into to, it was a five-year contract to get the thirty cents.
And and when do we, so how many years are in?
Years go right after, I think, twenty twenty one, because I tried to get them in twenty six-ish. Ish, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we should take a look, see because.
Well, I mean, I mean, three years, it's a hundred fifty thousand dollars. We could hire a programmer and have an app done. I mean.
But you also have to be responsible for all the bugs.
That's true.
That's true. I mean, like seriously, if you want to take that, take that on as a municipality, I'm not sure that's what we want to take on.
No, I know.
I mean, I'm, I'm a big fan of private industry, you know, doing what they do best. Government doesn't tend to do this stuff really well.
Come on.
If they don't.
The app came online, so many people were using, were using it and not getting tickets. So they.
That's good.
That was a huge improvement and the people liked the fact that, yes, if they were running late, they didn't have to leave wherever they were and go throw money in the meter that they could just. All points well taken, but it really reduced the amount of tickets that people were getting.
That was one of the reasons after COVID, we we got it implemented because we were trying before that and it, you know, but this really pushed it forward and it has been a great help for a lot of people.
Good.
It really.
I think it's, it's just fair, you know, and when we go back out in twenty twenty six, we look at multiple vendors and, you know, see what the best best providers out there are, what costs.
Technology is coming online all the time.
Yep. Yeah. Okay. So if there are no further questions, if I could get a motion to approve a request by the parking department to approve a purchase order by Pay by Phone mobile app in the amount of forty eight thousand dollars in order to cover monthly billing for Pay by Phone banking and transaction fees.
So moved.
Second.
It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Amy's idea about that QR code that we, you know, I don't know. That's a.
So I will definitely look into it, see if we can get some new signage from them.
Just makes it easier. You'll drive more people to it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Perfect. Thank you. Marcy.
So Human Services is asking for an approval for the agreement between the Board of Ed and the Town of New Canaan and Silver Hill Hospital. The monies were approved in the budget. This is just a done amendment to the original agreement. It is going to be July first, twenty twenty four and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty five.
Any updated utilization numbers?
I do, actually. I just talked to Susanna the other day and the average volume is between eleven and sixteen cases a month.
Is that for New Canaan only or for the whole NQIAP?
That is for everybody.
So that includes Weston.
Right. And she has, she has broken it down. New Canaan gets sixteen slots for a week. Weston gets four slots a month, which is once a week. And the capacity is for two hundred and fifty people a year. And it's gotten some really great great reviews, patient experience, efficient intake, meets needs in the appointment timeframe, positive clinical experience, all got one hundred percent reviews. Would recommend the program again. Ninety two percent of the people would recommend the program again. So it seems to be running, it seems to be running well. The Board of Ed and the town seem to be fifty percent of the referrals. Maybe eighteen percent are primary care physicians and four percent are from mental health professionals and twenty percent are from just community members and organizations like churches and stuff like that.
You said there's a cap on how many people per town?
There is.
Now, have they ever come close to that? And if somebody was in need, would we really care about that cap or we would let someone?
Oh, no, they would not care about that cap.
Right. Okay. So that that's important.
But I don't think we've met that cap.
Right.
Not at all throughout the running of the program.
They'd be there for them, right?
Good. Just one question.
In fact, I had gotten a call on Friday night for a nineteen year old and we were able to get her in and get her evaluated within an hour. So, I mean, they moved very, very quickly.
Yeah, it seems like they can do twenty total between Weston and New Canaan and their average is between eleven and sixteen a month.
Those definitely is.
Yeah.
Good. That's important.
So can we take a moment and just, how do you access this and what, what's the easiest way for a resident to access the service?
There's a phone number. We have it on our website. We have it in pamphlets.
It's on the town website.
Everywhere. It's on the town website. Susanna Lewis is trying to get into doctors' offices and that kind of thing as well.
Police carry the cards.
And they have a direct phone number. So they know that it is for the urgent assessment program.
So if you're going on the town website, would you? Yeah, when you, when you're not used to a website, it's kind of hard to know where to go. Okay. It's just, I wonder if there's, you know, something, you know, a box.
We're constantly, we're constantly dealing with that front page.
No, I'm sure, I'm sure there is and it's complicated.
Social media hits and I think we've also had it on the front page, but people would go to Human Services, PD has it on theirs. So I.
Yeah, I think it's pretty well known now.
Right.
Silver Hill does its own outreach marketing, like you said, goes to doctors. They have this Behavioral Health Alliance that is, you know, kind of pushing that out as well. So.
Just one, one of the things, when you, when you might need it, you.
Wouldn't know.
It's not a world that you live in. So, you know, however you can.
Right.
For it, if you don't know you need it.
Yep. That's why I think doctors are probably the best for, yeah, in the schools. Because, you know, you're right. I I'm not sure I would think to call the town. If I had this situation, I would probably call my doctor or my, you know, school. You're right.
That's why when you're, when you said you had taken a call, I mean, is that a direct call to town hall?
It was, it was actually a direct call from just a resident who had reached out and we were able to make the connection.
That's, to your point, like you, I don't think I would think of dialing, you know, into town hall.
Right.
Somebody knows Cheryl.
Calling to me just from a resident who was asking for help.
Okay.
So. Yeah. Yeah.
Right, exactly. I mean, that's.
But we can definitely do more. Me, Marcy can do, especially back to school.
Yeah.
Yep.
New Canaan Moms are.
Good. Oh, that's good.
And we can always just do a reminder posting, guess. Like, Enza could do something on Instagram, you know, in September.
Yeah.
New Canaan.
Local press here. New Canaan, that'd be great, a little.
It's getting hard. It's September and.
But it's twenty four seven and not the.
Yeah.
Great. All right.
All right. Thank you. So if there are no further questions, if I could get a motion to approve an agreement with, between the Town of New Canaan, Board of Education and Silver Hill Hospital for the administration of NQIAP. Second. It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Joe and Tiger.
One of our favorite subjects.
Oh, great. Perfect. Thank you.
Thanks. Can we make sure this is in documents?
All right. Good morning. So we're here to give you an update on the CHPs. So as part of the Town's Energy Initiative, the town has installed five combined heat and power units, four thirty five KW units, wastewater treatment facility, highway department, town hall and Laughlin Community Center, and one seventy five KW at SAC School. So oversimplified it, these units are natural gas fire generators powered by a Janmar tractor engine. What is unique about these is that the waste heat generated by the motor is brought into the building's heating system via a heat exchanger. So the thermal energy created by the motor is used to heat the building. So that's how you get the savings from the electric and the savings. That's why they work is because the savings from the the heat. The benefits of the CHPs are, they are seventy five percent efficient compared to fifty percent efficient from traditional boiler and power plant. And that's just based on Department of Energy website. So you lose a little efficiency at the, with the distribution with.
So you said seventy five versus fifty?
If you combine the two. They are point of service, which means nothing is lost in the distribution of the electricity and the heat can be used. Actually, that's where you exchange it into the building. They shed load off the grid, which helps the town on peak energy days. It also has the opportunity. You also get a peak charge on your electric bill. So if you happen to carve that peak charge down, you can save money that way as well. And it also helps because the town does suffer from brownouts on very high demand days. So it could, it could help, it could help just stabilize the grid a little. And then they save money. So the CHPs helped pave the way to get natural gas service to the town buildings, which allowed us to convert to natural gas for all of our boilers, for most of our boilers. We're in the process of doing that. So you spend less on the heating oil. So that was kind of a, a byproduct, not really in the calculation of the savings, but it's another savings. Deloitte is working with the town to get us a hundred thousand dollars investment tax credit for the Laughlin CHP. That just became available. It's, it's a unique, it's, it's a unique that it's a tax credit. So we actually have to file, file taxes. So that's more of a, an and and Deloitte thing in order to do that, but we're.
Pay taxes. So how does a tax credit work?
No, the Deloitte found a way that they, they opened it up to municipalities. So it was the Department of Energy, it's part of a special program just for, just for this. So the mechanism is, the way I understand it, I understand it very little, is the town creates a tax filing, a zero tax filing, and then they, and they ask for the credit off of that.
It's basically a grant. I mean, it is.
Yeah.
It's just a grant, but they, they should just name it something else. Which is fine. I mean, that's not, that's not your deal.
Yeah. And I think they, I think they started with, I think they started with the private world and then they, and they extended it to the town and they, they needed to have a mechanism to do it. So they came up with that. So we'll see how that works out.
Part of the Infrastructure and Jobs Act.
Right.
Is where it, where it originated.
Energy.
Right. So we can qualify for a thirty to forty percent of the cost. So that's what I'm seeing. It's approximately a hundred thousand dollars. And and it's a, you know, it could be up to, up to, because there's always, always things that are not qualifying costs. A hundred and forty thousand and as low as a hundred. So I just put in the hundred to be conservative. And then based on the data collected at the wastewater treatment facility, the savings was twenty six thousand per year, which gives it a simple payback on these CHP units of about ten, ten years for that location. uh, the savings was twenty-six thousand per year, which gives it a simple payback on these CHP units of about ten, ten years for that location. And that's, you can see on the, the backup sheet how that was calculated, um, and then.
Cause we just got this, so, to talk about, so the savings per year for the highway department are, you know, uh, sixty percent of what they expected them to be. Is that because the input costs from natural gas were higher than when we initially assumed? I mean, wha- what, why the differential?
So, um.
Energy costs are hard to pick, I mean, they just.
So when, with the analysis, and the analysis is also attached, um, by MHR. There were certain assumptions that were made, um, and I think they were, they were more, um.
Aggressive.
Aggressive than, than what turned out to be, um, but.
They, they were at that point in time, whatever they felt.
That could be made, right. And there was also time that you, the, um, it's also challenging to get the, uh, the renewable energy credits as high as, as we like, they're traded as a commodity. Um, we're, we're relying on the gas costs, cost that's also, um, a commodity. Although we are, um, tied in with a, a DG rider where we get a rebate on the gas. And it, it is because of this program, the gas, the natural gas is more stable of a cost. So I guess the, um, in, in generally speaking, um, to just kind of, to, to continue down, uh, the good news, there's a good news, bad news, um, thing here. And that the electricity is, costs are going up. So, as electricity costs go up, so we're, looks like there's, there's, could be a possibly a five cents increase on the distribution and three, three on the, um, consumption. Or, or, um, so if you add the eight cents to how much it costs, because we're basically comparing it to off-grid costs. And there's some other incidental costs and stuff, uh, that, that this analysis ignores for the sake, sake of simplicity. But if you were to add the eight cents increase, you would actually save forty-seven thousand dollars a year. If, if it was running.
So if you run, if you're rerunning the model that you're using to assume what your savings are today. You would say, wow, I'm gonna save a cent kilowatt per, for electricity. So, y- y- again, it's a fluid model in terms of, and so, on the one hand, your gas costs are up. On the other hand, your electricity costs are up and you're reducing your electricity assumption because of, so. So, if, I mean, today, like, your, your reality check is like, uh, the payback's more ten years and six years. Except if you're looking at it now, in fact, moving forward, your payback might be quicker because your, um, opportunity cost of not paying the higher electricity will help bring in the payback period.
Yeah, the, the, the rate that you'd calculate, so how much it costs for, per kilowatt hour for the town to produce it and get the heat from it, is gonna stay, um, is not gonna rise at the same rate as utility costs.
And you don't have.
So you'd have to, you'd have to guess at that, and I think there was some guesses made at that as part of the analysis. So that's another reason why it's a little low, it's a little lower and then, then.
So just, Joe, if we could just, for public and for simplicity's sake, when we entered into this transaction, the proposed payback period for these units was?
So like seven, seven years.
And so we're looking at ten possibly, but it could fluctuate based on where electricity rates go and, and natural gas.
Correct.
Prices. Yep, the, the question I have is, I just, I had the simple payback, but you had no bonding costs, how much did we bond for these?
So for the first two, we didn't bond anything. Um, that's wastewater treatment facility and the highway, it came out of the operating, not the operating, the, um, the, it came out of their fund, the, whatever fund that is, for the wastewater.
Wastewater plan had a fund.
Yes.
Correct.
So it didn't, it wasn't, it wasn't bonded, it was money that was available.
Okay.
It was money that was available in, in a fund that was built up. So, um, and no, that, that, that's correct, there was never the simple payback. With all the calculations that was presented to all the boards and committees, it was always a simple payback and it ignored bonding. Um, I think at the time bonding was also so dirty.
Yeah, it was zero.
So, so now, so now you.
Now we are paying for it, okay. We should, you know, add that in, um, you know, for another relook at it, just so that we can have a truer sense of the overall costs.
Well, yeah, except if we, you know, those bonds were already issued, so.
No, no, I understand, it's just, it's not an accurate reflection of the true costs of a program to not include the financing on it.
What about, what about reliability and repair costs of these units, is that?
So it's, it's, so they have.
We're talking about, instead of seven years, it's ten years, so those, those three extra years of.
Yeah, so, so the way, so the way these, these work is we pay a maintenance per, per hour of runtime. And, uh, the maintenance costs also builds in a certain amount of like major milestones. If you have to like rebuild the motor in seven years, um, it includes that and amortizes it in, in that, in that number.
And, um, I know we've discussed this, sort of, what is the, uh, projected life of these units?
Twenty years, I think there's a, twenty years is what was quoted to us. There is a, there is a major rebuild that, you know, the eight, ten year range. These are, these are basically motors, they're, they're, albeit they're like tractor motors, but they're, they're running at like eighty percent.
The, with the major rebuild, because that was a concern I had, I'm like, okay, well, it's twenty year, but you have a major rebuild at ten and it's, we're looking at a payback of ten, um, seven to ten, you know, sort of. But the, do the energy company or the, the company we contracted with absorb some of those? How did, I remember there was something funny about how those rebuild costs are paid.
Yeah, so the, the, uh, the whatever it is, the dollar and a quarter an hour for runtime, it covers.
The rebuild.
Okay, that's built in, yeah, yeah. Can I ask a really slow question? During the summer, when you don't want the heat, what happens to it?
So, that, it all depends on the, the, the spark spread on, you know, how much energy costs versus.
Did he just say spark spread?
That's, that was a.
Okay, now you're under.
By Mark.
Right, that was a term that we learned as well.
It's, it's, it's a, the, the cost difference between basically running a generator and throwing away the heat and how much we pay for it, um, off the grid. So if energy.
Saying in the summer.
Energy is fourteen cents and we can, and, and if we're paying fourteen cents today on the grid and we can generate it for thirteen cents, then it's, then it's worth it to run it. It's really not, I, I'm finding that it doesn't seem to be all that worth it to run it. In the middle of the summer.
Okay, thank you, that helps. I was wondering if we just shoot the heat out somewhere, which would be.
We do, it does have the ability to do that.
Okay.
Wow.
Look at the, the overall analysis, and I don't know if it's in this one, or it might have one somewhere else. But the, it goes by month, you know, shows where you get your peak savings. You get your peak savings in the shoulder, the shoulder, you know, heating season and into, into spring, when you're actually using the heating.
You don't get savings in the winter when you're using the heat?
No, all winter, all through the winter, sorry, did I say that wrong?
So we can turn it off for three or four months a year?
Absolutely.
And, and, and this is so silly, but if you're not running it for three or four months a year, does that increase the average life of the unit? Or do they just assume in your average life that you're turning it off?
Yeah, it would definitely, it would definitely increase. Um, it would probably slow down payback, because you're, instead of knocking off a couple cents an, an hour, you know, of runtime, um, or kilowatt, I should say, so it's thirty-five, so it's, you know, instead of making seventy cents an hour, you are, uh, not, you're not taking that off the top of your bill, you know, to run down the payback.
Yeah, I mean, it's just two things, one, payback, and then there's useful life, just, like you said, just turning it on and off for the useful life, or? But right now, like, like, so in, kind of worst-case scenario, okay, let's, let's say it's a ten-year payback, not a six-point-six, okay? Though in fact, we're hoping it gets better because we defer electricity expenses we have otherwise. So, we're hopefully looking at ten years where we realize significant savings on this, after we do the ten-year.
Right, with the twenty-year life.
And, and that's kind of a worse, kind of sort of worst case, you know, but realizing.
If we get the twenty-year life.
Energy.
If we get the twenty-year life, that's, that's the big, do we get the twenty, we don't know yet, that's what we were told. So we will, time will tell, time will tell.
But the flip side, even if, just not on a, a money basis, right? But in terms of, um, you were saying that it reduces our exposure to brownouts and the other kind of, not, yeah, security, that you, you can be off the grid, that you can run, when other things aren't. I mean, there are other, uh, positives to it beyond just dollars.
The true test is if we'll ever do additional units, and that'll be the true test, when we look at it, you know?
Yeah, the only other place we were looking at was at the high school, when that was the only, at, at present. But that's on the Board of Ed's side, so, but that's the only other facility at present that we were looking. We took basically the largest ones that we had, you know, or the ones that had other things.
Often have they been offline because of issues?
Um, they, they haven't been without issues, um, that's for sure, um. I don't know the exact percentage, we had problems with, uh, the one at the wastewater treatment facility. It went off, it burnt up a board, they, they had to get it from Japan. It took a couple months, but luckily it was in the, it was in the, um, spring. So it wasn't the worst time for it to happen.
Did the high school, I mean, the Saks unit also go offline for a while, or no?
Uh, I don't really have a lot of transparency on that one, I could, I could find out.
I just think it'd be a good thing for us as a community to understand how reliable these units are. In addition to sort of, you know, the anticipated savings and the environmental.
Yep.
You know, all that kind of stuff, are they reliable? Are they reliable? Cause if we are expecting them for brownouts and things like that, if, that's a great thing unless they're not reliable.
That's true.
Yeah, well, the, the good news is that if they're not running, you're not, you're not paying for it.
You're just paying the regular rate.
You're just, yeah, so if you're not.
But we did pay for it and.
You paid for it, but.
We're still paying to, for the cost of it.
For the cost, but if you're not, yeah, if you're not, um.
Right.
You're not paying to produce the electricity, you're paying down the year, you paid for the unit, yes.
Yeah, we need them to work, and we work consistently to make them make sense for the community. So that's what we just really need to start really monitoring how efficient they are and how effective they are and how much maintenance they're, you know, creating, so, um, okay.
And you're, you'll get this packet added to the.
Yes, well, we'll add this packet to the, to the, uh, public packet. Thank you, Joe, I know this is a lot, because, you know, um, it, it's a, because it's a consulting-based industry. You know, there's not a lot of transparency, so Joe has done a lot of work to, sort of.
We can tell, we can tell by the lingo.
I know.
I gotta bring more lingo to these meetings.
Yeah, so thank you for all your efforts on this, it's, it's very helpful to all of us, so thank you very much. Um, okay, moving on to the Audubon, unless anybody has, you know, cut it short, okay, Audubon House.
So, um, over at the Nature Center, we're looking for, um, the Department of Public Works is requesting to author, authorization to enter into a contract with Fussin O'Neill for environmental services. Uh, this is required to perform the demolition of the Audubon House located at the Nature Center, um, in the amount of four thousand three hundred fifty-five dollars plus a contingency of eight hundred dollars, uh, for a total of five thousand one hundred and fifty-five dollars. So, what we need to do to, in order to demolish the Audubon House is we have to put in place an alternative work practice. An alternative work practice is because the building is already falling down, the, um, the, uh, building department does not want anyone to go in to the building to do the testing and the abatement. So the alternative work practice will, will put together a plan that will be presented to the Connecticut Department of Health for approval in order to just basically to, um, take the building down in a demo and sort type manner.
I'm sorry, I'm a little confused on that. So the building's falling down, so none of, i- if the building wasn't falling down, could we do internally what you're saying, we're hiring someone externally to do?
No, we couldn't do it internally. No, they say it would, it would still be, the only difference between this and the, the one I'm gonna present. Two things down, is that in this, in this building, traditionally, you get a pre-demolition inspection. You go in and you take out all the hazardous materials. We're not gonna be able to do this in, in the Audubon House, because the roof is already falling in. So you can't go into the building for testing and you can't go into the building to remove any, anything that is found. So, the alternative work plan basically gives, uh, sets the stage for how the building is gonna come down and what manner it's gonna come down and how it's gonna be sorted and controlled.
So is this, uh, number incorporated into, uh, we, we had a line item, Tiger, for the cost of taking down the building, is that incorporated in that estimated cost?
Correct, yes, it is. So there's fifty thousand, there's fifty thousand dollars in fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, which this would be funded from.
I'm gonna ask another question. So, given the age of this building, there's an assumption that there is, you know, problem, materials within it, lead or whatever, right? Right, so, is, do, do you have to do the pre-study? Or can you just assume we're gonna, we're, we're just assume this thing's contaminated and then take it down in there and save the five thousand? And maybe it's just offset with, uh, the cost of, uh, getting rid of the materials, I mean.
So, so in.
You know what I mean, because you're, you're gonna find, you know, there's something in there. Can we just say, oh, the whole thing's gonna have something, so if we approach demolition this way, it would cost X, Y, Z, but we wouldn't hit this five thousand dollar expense?
Right, so we would still need the alternative work practice, because we, we, the Department of Public Works is not, or anyone is, is not allowed to take down a building with asbestos in it.
Okay.
They go through the process of, um, instead of doing the traditional route, which I mentioned before is the testing and then taking it out, um, it's really a demo and sort. So that's, um, I wouldn't say it's more hazardous, but it's, it's a different type of exposures to hazardous materials. Um, and we're gonna have them test, um, you know, the, the air quality while, while they're doing it. I mean, we're gonna have people in tieback suits that are gonna be in the middle of our nature center. So, we need to protect those people.
If, if somebody is taking down a building on their property, do they face those same requirements?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that was what I was gonna ask, because the bill, this is literally like the size of a, you know, it's a, it's a. It's a, it's a big tool shed, right? So most people on their property, we call the guy with the backhoe and a dump truck, they'd bring him in, they'd scoop it, throw it in the dump truck and it goes to the dump. I mean, you know, this is like a giant process with suits and, you know, testing and it's, and I thought it was because it was a municipality that we had to go through this, because I don't think a resident would ever think of doing anything like that.
Yeah.
No, it would just be a scoop and go, I mean, it's, he'd probably.
If they have a permit, they would have to do this. So if there is a permit issued and they think that there's, then, then all these things would come up.
Yeah, it would, it would be triggered by the Department of Public Health. Would they, I mean, I'm not saying it doesn't happen, the, the way you're, the way you're saying it, but a lot of places, um, if they see this, you know, if they see a building like this, you know, four hundred and fifty-one square foot basically shed, come in in a, in a dumpster, um, they wouldn't necessarily accept it. You know, that, they get in big trouble for accepting things that are full of PCBs and asbestos and nobody wants that.
So this is just.
And that person owns that, and that person that did that owns that waste cradle to grave. So, if it goes someplace and it ends up, you know, somewhere else that it's not supposed to be, you could be personally responsible, responsible for cleanup. Same thing with the town, we would, if it went to the wrong spot, we would be personally responsible.
A large percentage of that building, isn't there, there's a pretty good stone foundation around the bottom of it, isn't there? And then there's just basically lumber and roofing above it, right? Is there, is it like a, is it like a six-foot foundation that goes around it? And then, because when you start to calculate, exact, there's nothing in the stone. So, there's very little material there when you really look at it.
Yeah.
Right.
I mean, you could, I mean, it could be leaching, it could have been leaching lead paint for twenty years.
I'm not, I'm not gonna win this argument, I'm just looking at these numbers.
I just looked at the number, go, wow, that's a lot, just to have the right to take it down. I just looked at the number, go, wow, that's a lot just to have the right to take it down.
I get the grocery number. I get a number on a house. It's on a public road. It's, you know, I get that number, but this is like, you know.
Yeah.
It seemed like a scoop and go to me, but.
Unfortunately, it's a lot of little numbers, right? So there's no efficiency in doing a building that's this small. You kind of have to do that. They wouldn't care if they did an alternative work practice on a building that was 10 times the size, it would be the same.
Yep.
Right. Would there have been any efficiencies in, because we do have another, um, having them do at the same time, another property on, on town land that we needed to have evaluated. So you brought them in once and had them do multiple, multiple buildings.
I can, so I can ask them if, if we get both of these approved, if we could, if there's some, some efficiencies, I can surely ask them that.
That's a good thought.
Maybe afterwards, probably not, but before it might have been a better.
If they can be in town, you know, they, there's a lot of half days, right? There's half days and there's travel and there's inconvenience. So if we, if we are fortunate enough where we could tie these two together in a, in a way that they could be done at similar times, then.
Right.
We could look at that.
All right. All right. Any other questions? All right. If I could get a motion to approve a request from the department of public works to enter into a contract with Fuss and O'Neal in the amount of $4,355 plus a contingency of $800 for a total cost of $5,155. The project entails the testing, monitoring and abatement plan for the demolition of the Audubon House.
Can I ask a question? Uh, this is a Deanna question. Why do we need the contingency on this? This is just not a fixed.
Because they didn't have a lot of additional, additional air monitoring. So typically when we have, depending on when it's done, um, if, if we might do some additional air monitoring because it's a school.
Okay. So we would do the, would we do this like on a non-school day?
Yes.
Even though the kids would love to see all the men in the.
That would be so cool.
To see people in the Tyvek suits walking around.
Oh, they would love it. Thank you.
Yeah. So I have, I ha- I've read the motion. It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you. So the next is the, the Lakeview Avenue Culver, uh, Design Services. So the energy department, engineering department is requesting authorization to enter into a contract with WMC Consulting Engineers for engineering services to design the Lakeview Avenue Culver. Um, it's an on-name stream. In the amount of 166,500, uh, $500. Um, and this, this is a culvert that you probably never even noticed. It's just north of the Greystone, um, condo complex. So we had it, uh, it was actually brought to our attention by Mosey that there was some, some head wall issues with it. We had it inspected by, we went out and looked at it. We decided it was something that we needed to have the engineer who's come out from the, the, from WMC and, and look at it. It was inspected in 2023 and determined that the stone masonry abutments and wing walls were critical, in critical condition. So that they should be replaced. So the funds for the culvert were approved in the fiscal year 24, 25. And, uh, WMC has successfully completed the Hickok Road, Mary Emily Road, uh, wastewater treatment facility and the West Road Bridges for the town. So, um, their costs, we've, we've, we've had, we've bid them before and they're basically, all these guys are so conditioned by this state of Connecticut and what it costs, what they basically are able to get for designing a culvert or a bridge. This is actually, we're calling it a culvert, but it's really just a, most likely it's going to be a small, small bridge. So there's so, there's so much data on that. They, there, it's always the same cost. So there's not really a big incentive to go out and bid these services and their professional services.
How do they come up the 166,000 dollars? Is it hourly?
So it's, it's, it's really effort driven. So it's, it's about $95,000 is for the, for their design. The rest, there's a breakdown. There's a bunch of tasks in, in their, their proposal, which was attached, but there's, there's surveys that they need, they need to do. There's public information meetings they need to, to create and, um, present. They'll also go and seek, uh, like a 50% reimbursement from the, from the state of Connecticut. So there's some paperwork that's to be done for that because we're hoping to get reimbursed for 50% for that. There's the, uh, you know, the wetlands, the surveys, the borings, the geotechnical engineering, um, the engineering report and all that, the, the sum is the one, well, the 166,500. So some of these items, there could be some potential savings on these direct costs, but it's, it's, they're really consultants to, that do, uh, that do it all.
Takes us all the way through bidding, all the way through to the selection of contractor. So.
Any kind of a neighbor feedback? I mean, everybody over there understands what's going on.
Uh, we haven't got a whole lot of neighbor feedback over there. Um.
That would be part of the process is that, uh, in our public informational meetings, that'll be part of the process. So we've got to get to the point where we know what we're going to. He comes to us with three options, two, three options. Then we decide on an option. We get to that point, then we start the public information as he's proceeding towards final design. And then you kind of tell everyone how it's going to, how it's going to look and feel at the end, and then the construction schedule at that point. Trying to be a little aggressive on it only because, um, you know, we were, based upon the report, we were asked to, you know, we were directed to act.
So when is the Wednesday's schedule look like as far as complete or start completion? Do we, do we know that?
It would be completed by fall of next year if everything goes as planned.
Seven months to design it, right? Twenty agendas? I, I guess the design means all the public meetings and all the jazz too, right?
Yeah, they'll, they'll have a, they have a certain milestones, uh, in the design process where they can have the public meetings. The public meetings are usually, uh, pretty early on in the design process. So you, they're, they're just more of like diagrammatic, diagrammatic in nature. Bridge plans or culvert plans. So that they can, they can see exactly that, the area, the area of taking. And if there's any, you know, the, the, the overall work area.
One of the reasons we're called, we're differentiating and calling it the culvert instead of the bridge is so that people also understand that it's not the bridge. For various reasons, for two specific reasons, you know, um, but mainly for, um, to actually have people be aware that there's another bridge on, on Lakeview and then to then start paying attention that it could be, you know, next door to their house. So that they would be affected, you know, people from Summer Street, um, in that area between Summer Street and, uh, Millport Avenue will definitely be affected in that area because that'll be, that'll be the area shut down. So we'll have to be looking at detouring traffic around and we got to go do the work. So.
Would that probably be a next summer job?
That's, yeah, it's a next summer.
So it's a, it's a couple of months where we'd be detouring probably.
Likely, yeah. I mean, you could, we could get into the point of alternating traffic, but that just adds construction time and cost. So the thought being that since we have a an easier route around it to, to look to close, uh, you know, which would then definitely, um, decrease construction time.
Okay. Most expensive, non-visible bridge.
This number, right? I mean, this isn't.
We budgeted 2.2 million was in, uh, it was 2 million for construction, 200,000 for the design. So we're, we're below the design estimate.
We'll get some money to offset it.
All right. If there are no further questions, if I could get a motion to approve a request from the engineering department to enter into a contract with WMC Consulting Engineers in the amount of 166,500 dollars. The project entails engineering services to design the Lakeview Avenue Culver.
Some.
Second, it's unanimous. Thanks. Thank you. All right. Grove Street, 28 Grove Street.
So, uh, 28 Grove Street, pre-demolition inspection, testing and monitoring. The Department of Public Works is requesting authorization to enter into a contract with Fuss and O'Neal for the environmental services required to perform the demolition of 28 Grove Street in the amount of $6,208 plus a contingency of 600 for a total of $6,880. So Fuss and O'Neal is the licensed professional asbestos, uh, project designer that will conduct the inspection. And this will allow us to bid the demolition. They will also provide testing, um, in the project monitoring services. So, um.
In this one, they can go inside.
This one, they can go inside. Yep. And the funds are available for this one and, and professional services.
And Joe, you're going to ask Fuss and O'Neal to see if we can do them together and save a lot of money.
Correct. Yes.
Any other questions?
There's timeline for when we expect the, the work to be done. Once we get through this.
So we have, um, we have, uh, you know, have to go through the eight 24 review process. And then there's the, this building is of the age where there could be a delay when we ask for the, um, demolition permit. So that could be a 90 day delay. So I would just assume, um, I would just assume next, next year for now, we could help you do, we could help to, to expedite that.
In the meantime, uh, we're responsible for keeping it looking as nice as we can, I guess, right? I mean, you know. That was, that a load of questions.
It's ours. So we, we are responsible for the maintenance. So the, we've had, we had a little issue in the back with a wall collapse. We, we, you know, we fixed that or removed that, tried to, you know, make that safe. But yes, we are, right now we've, we've taken it off of services. So it's disconnected. So it's just a shell of a building. That's one of the reasons why we'd like to just, you know, get on with it and get it done.
Go by and like trim the trees or do something over there, right?
We'll have the parks, the parks department's aware of it. We'll have them go take a look. Yeah.
We don't want to become the, uh, next TD back there.
I was hoping you weren't talking about painting the building. I'm like, what are you talking about?
We don't want, like, used against us, you know?
Trees will hide the building.
Just the grass, mow the grass, you know, keep it respectable. Okay. Um, any other questions? If not, I mean, if I could get a motion to approve a request from the Department of Public Works to enter into a contract with Fuss and O'Neal in the amount of $6,208 plus a contingency of $600 for a total of $6,808. The project includes, entails the environmental services required to perform the demolition of 28 Grove Street.
Some.
Second, it's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Um, so this first one, I'll, I'll, uh, I'll preface with the fact that, um, yesterday we received some very exciting and very saddening news, exciting for the person saddening for the town. Since our venerable, um, highway superintendent has tendered his resignation. So he'll be retiring as of September 6th, I believe. So I shouldn't say it's a resignation. He tendered his retirement. So Moses is actually.
That guy's, we made him speak. We put him on them.
We will. He's not here. So he's.
You didn't make him come today.
Yeah, it's Moses not one for, you know, he's not one for. Right. He's, uh, he's actually, he's actually going to look at a couple of trucks right now with, um, so I can't bring Lou either, but, um, so I have to bring it forward and, you know, Cheryl said you, you might want to make an announcement. I, I'm about to cry, so I can't really do it that well. So, but yeah. Moses has been here for 44 years as, as an employee, been our superintendent since 2007. So he's done a fantastic job. We will have a party for him and we're very happy for him. It's a, it's a great day for him. It's not necessarily for the town. Due to his experience and his knowledge and his just, you know, his, uh, his overall work ethic. So we wish him well. We'll, we'll, uh, we'll be using, utilizing him while he's, while he's in retirement, uh, you know, for at least the first six months or so. You know, looks like we're going to get a hurricane right after he retires, which is maybe that was his plan. Not really quite certain. But, uh, but we, uh, yeah, unfortunately that's, um, those are the, that's the news that we received yesterday and, uh, and then we'll move forward from there. As far as the item goes, the, uh, we are looking to, uh, purchase a new, uh, two-ton spalding slip-in hot box, 2024 model. This is to replace um, one of our existing hot boxes. This is with the Sevis Corporation. That's for 23,176. They were the source well, they were the source well contractor for a four-ton unit. We don't have enough money for a four-ton unit, nor do we need a four-ton unit. So we asked them to give us the price for a two-ton unit. They gave us the price for a two-ton unit and they are the only spalding dealer in Connecticut. So this is one of the reasons why we went with, um, went with this corporation. We've had success, um, with the person that, uh, the president of the company, when he was with, with a different company and, uh, we're very confident in going forward. With this purchase and monies are available. Uh, we have monies available in, um, $20,000 in, in the capital side and we'll be supplementing it with, uh, some money from road maintenance, $3,176 to make up the difference.
This is 25 budget or?
This is no previous year budget. I'm not, I'm not quite certain, uh, what year.
24.
Yeah, might, might have been, I, I, I don't know. I could let you know after.
Is this, uh, going to be enough to, uh, do all the damage that EverSource and Aquarian has done or is?
Well, so this is more for, um, yeah, for small repairs. When we, we contract out for the larger ones, but these are for, this is especially in the winter for, for, uh, we could use hot material instead of cold patch, cold patch. By the time we drive away, it's, it's coming out of the hole. So the hot patch will actually last. And then we can actually keep it overnight. So it saves us, we save us from driving to the plant and we can keep it hot overnight and then utilize it again. So to your point, yes and no, right? So the, the larger trenches, yeah, we, we contract out for those. But the smaller repairs and smaller curb repairs that we have sporadically throughout the year, this is, um, this is an excellent item and it's actually saving us money.
So the box actually just keeps it hot. You don't have to like plug it in to keep it hot.
Get in to keep it hot. Yes. Yeah. Cause it's, it's actually, you know, it, yeah, it runs, it runs off the, the truck when it's there. And then you plug it in, in the, in the wind, in the evening, overnight. Yeah. But it'll keep that material as they're working through the whole day. It'll keep that material hot for the entire day, which so it won't, it won't cool off. Once it starts to cool off, it starts to lose its, uh, efficacy, you know, it's, it's, uh, it's usefulness.
Why do you use it more in the winter and the, the?
Winter predominantly in the shoulder months and then in the winter. Yes. You know, during the, during the heat of the, you know, timeframe, we don't necessarily have to have it on during, during, right now, the materials stay warm throughout. But that, you know, you'd be surprised at how much it drops off, like say on a November, October day, how much the heat will drop off during that.
There are no further questions. If I could get a motion to approve a request from the Department of Public Works to enter into a contract with Viking. See?
Sevis.
Sevis?
Sorry.
Sevis USA in the amount of $23,176 for the purchase of a new two-ton spalding hot box.
Some.
Second.
Thank you.
Terry, just, so was that in last year's budget or the year before budget?
We can see, uh, you know, I know the monies are available. I just have to find out exactly.
Is it just hard to find them? Is that, if it was, if it was older, it was hard to find?
Yeah, they, well, not harder to find, but we were, we were looking through, trying to find the right model. And then the company that we were originally purchasing from went out of business. So then we were then forced then start to look further. That, that was the reason. Um, and I'll get most to come back in, in the next meeting.
Oh.
Before he, uh, you know, on the 20th. So, uh, that, that way, you know, uh, we can go from there.
Yeah. It came into my office yesterday to deliver his resignation letter and I've only been here like eight months and I'm like emotional about it. So I can't even imagine with the 40, you know, the highway department has quite a, quite a number of long tenured employees and obviously Tiger and everybody. So he's, he's universally beloved in the, in the, uh, town. So.
Exactly.
Yeah.
That's why the town looks so good.
Yeah. Yep. So anyway, all right. Okay. Flow Assessment Services.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The Department of Public Works is respectfully requesting to enter into a contract with Flow Assessment Services in the sum of $15,750 for the services to monitor sanitary sewer flow at seven different locations in our collection system. Services include flow meter installation, operation, maintenance, and then the findings of the readings across a two-week monitoring window. The meter locations will be targeting the tier C5 and C6 commercial users in our current sewer use fee structure. The results of the two-week flow monitoring are being sought to obtain a better understanding of the actual flow from these users in the town sewer collection system. The tier C5 category represents the schools and the YMCA, and the tier six category represents the Merritt Parkway rest stops. As you're aware, we are looking to amend the sewer use fee structure for fiscal year 26 so as to streamline the annual process and better align with sewer use demand. Consistent with the Connecticut Public Health Code, a first sewage disposal going forward, residential fees are planned to be based on bedroom count. The commercial fee structure is currently not slated for modification and the requested sewer flow analysis presented today will better provide support for these metrics. We recommend that the contract be awarded to Flow Assessment Services for a total fee of $15,750 and the funds are currently available.
Thank you, Mary.
And the funds are coming from?
Waste water. Yeah, we have consulting fees.
Yeah. So thank you for all the work on getting this started. Cause you know, I think we're gonna do a lot of work to make the process much more efficient. So, um, I appreciate all the, all the background work.
Yeah, I mean, I'll get the data will support the fee structure, which is really, to be fair to everybody. It's, you know.
It's great. And I think it'll be easier going forward too as well for residents specifically as well. You know, resident knows how many bedrooms you have, then you know how much your fee is. It's very simple calculation at that point in time or no calculations, just an understanding. So.
I'm jealous of people who are on wastewater treatment. To just have that peace of mind.
One of the only requirements I had when I bought a house was that, was to be, make sure that it was attached to, to the system.
Yeah, I, I municipal services are great to have water and sewer terrific. Okay. Any other questions? Not, if I could get a motion to approve a request from Public Works to enter into a contract with Flow Assessment Services in the amount of fifteen thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars for services to monitor flow as part of the water pollution control facility.
Second.
It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you. So this next one is, um, a purchase order approval for fiscal twenty-five with All American Waste, which is, uh, Murphy Road Holdings. Uh, and this is, so we ran into a situation where we had, um, these are for dumpster pickups at, uh, the track and the tennis courts. So in essence, we have several dumpsters throughout town in our buildings or in our parks. And, um, we have two separate haulers working, um, one to try to split the load and two to make sure that if everyone can't handle it, we can utilize a different hauler. Mer- All American Waste actually hauls out of our transfer station. So there are transfer station hauler. And, uh, because of that, we had already gotten approval on the larger, uh, amount. We should have brought this all in one encompassing thing. I apologize. But it was basically different divisions working within the department. So we had the Parks Division, Transfer Station working, working separately. So this is an add of, uh, three thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars. Um, and it's based on last year's expenditures. And the expenditures for this service, um, exceed the, uh, ten thousand dollar limit. It's actually ten thousand fifty for the areas of dumpsters that they utilize or that they take care of us for us in the town. So.
And that's the cost for the entire year.
It's still the cost for the year. Yeah.
Dumpster, do they become a problem with people just thinking, oh, I'm gonna throw my trash out here? I know it's always difficult in these, I mean, cause I know if you have garbage cans, people are watching a game and they're cleaning out the car or, you know.
Not at this location, but we've had like Meat Park. Yeah, we've had people. Yes, we've had people, um, uh, Meat Park specifically, we had somebody put a sofa in one, uh, you know. But, so we have, we do have people, but we also have people in the downtown area that will stuff a garbage can in the downtown area with their household garbage. So, yeah, you have, you have that, unfortunately have that everywhere.
I, I have a, a request later, um, to do some fencing and locking of those for this reason.
Morse Court. Yeah, yeah, specifically.
Eventually, like it, it'll clean it up. It'll make it look nicer and it'll lock it. So only people who have access to it can access it.
It's a bit ridiculous because it's, to get a transfer pass is not a lot of money. You know, and it's, yeah, yeah, look, it's, it's what it's always a small percentage of people make it difficult for the rest of us. Yeah.
I, I like to think it's not residents. I guess out of town or is that coming in?
You could think that.
Yeah. To your point, in the case of the couch, if the, if you had the transfer station sticker, the couch would have been free because it would have been under three hundred pounds. You would have taken it and we would dispose it for you instead of dumping in the dumpster. We gotta go down there. We gotta pull it out of the dumpster.
And now with the swap shop, maybe somebody else would have taken it. Although maybe that's too big for the swap. Yeah. Sorry. Um, could I get a motion to approve a request from the Department of Public Works to approve a purchase order with All American Waste in the amount of three thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars for refuse services?
Thank you.
Sidewalks.
So this, this next item is a contract with Cabezas De Angelis, um, engineering for the design of the sidewalk on the Walter Stewart side of Elm Street from basically their entire frontage of property. We kind of started the brick sidewalk, stopped at their, um, at their, uh, eastern edge and then started again um, on the western side and came forward and then stopped at their, uh, at their western edge. So this is the stretch in between. It's actually a very, very difficult stretch. Um, not a lot of right away, not a lot of room. And then based because of, um, Walter Stewart itself and the fact that it's so active, um, and the parking therein, it's very, it's a, it's a difficult, um, location. So we ask Cabezas De Angelis to come forward with a, uh, with a proposal. Uh, it was ninety-five hundred dollars and I added on five hundred dollars, uh, uh, to estimated direct costs for copying and things of that nature for a total estimated fee of ten thousand dollars. They've done, um, sidewalk design work. All of our sidewalk design work, I should say, since twenty twelve. So they designed the main street sidewalks, um, the Richmond Hill ones, River Street, Grove Street, Mead Street, Park Street, Old Stanford Road, um, they're, so they're very aware of the town. They're very aware of the standards that we have and what we're trying to accomplish. And, uh, so it's much easier to have them just, um, continue that vision or the vision that we have going forward. So we'd like to go forward with this, uh, with this contract with Cabezas De Angelis for ten thousand dollars. And at that point in time, we'll have a plan that we can go to, um, Walter Stewart's with, make sure that they're in agreement with it and then go out to bid and have a, have this area finished. And constructed. So.
So I have a question because, you know, I've, I've been having some issues with the sidewalks recently. There, you know, we need a lot of maintenance on our sidewalks. And, um, this is sort of outside of the downtown area and I know I want to have it tie in. Um, but is there a way in this area maybe to, instead of having the loose under, um, under maybe doing, you know, an overlay on a, on a solid surface? Because, I mean, we need a lot of maintenance on our sidewalks and.
I mean, the bricks popping up.
Yeah, and there's, well, and there, 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 there's divots, there's, it's not just heaving by tree wells. There's lots of, if you walk around, there's a lot of work and I'm concerned. So we're adding again to an, uh, a system that is needing a lot of maintenance. Um, and I'm concerned because it's not in the downtown, it'll get pushed off and maybe there's a more, um, effective way to have a sidewalk there, um, that isn't so maintenance heavy.
We can look at, to your point, the, we can look at, uh, and add alternate or an alternative design where we would we bid it as the standard and then bid it with a rat slab, a concrete glass, rat slab underneath, see what the differential is. Factor that into the, to your point, to the maintenance cost or the increased maintenance cost of just the, uh, the standard brick on, on a stone-based material. And then, uh, and then see if that's a, that's an avenue that we, you know, want to go forward saying, okay, that it'll be a, uh, nominal increase if it is to, uh, put in, in a, once we put the rat slab in, the bricks sit on top of it, the, um, there shouldn't be any settlement at that point. The, the, of what we're seeing, settlement around the granite curb in certain areas around tree wells or others.
It's not just tree wells though, Tiger. It's in the middle of the sidewalk.
No, I.
Morse Court, there's two major divots and. So, I mean, I'm just very concerned about these sidewalks. We, we, you know.
Yeah, to that point, I think, I think it's, I think it's an excellent idea and I think we can do that and say, you know, and again, that way we know the difference between the two costs. And then we have a, now, now we start to get a, a unit price associated with that. And, and to your point, we have out to bid right now approximately eighty-five thousand dollars worth of work in the downtown area. So I have the three, three Morse Court areas. One by Starbucks, one in front of the Playhouse, one, um.
So maybe we should look at that, you know, if we get this quote, let's look at that for improvement to the, you know.
Yeah, these are spot, yeah.
And yeah, they're not gonna shift because they, there's an impermeable surface that they're on top of, right?
Yeah.
So it might cost more short-term.
Right, but. Yeah, exactly.
So all of our brick sidewalks right now are just put down on, um.
Stone dust.
Uh, stone, yes, stone dust basis. And then there, it's a stone dust and concrete, uh, but dry mix. Um, so it's a bag of concrete mixed in with the stone dust just to give it a little bit of bite. And then the exact same thing is swept into the joints. Predominantly, the only sidewalk that we have that isn't that is on a rat slab is on Burtus Avenue, because Burtus Avenue heads downhill. So those we actually put on a rat slab because we were afraid of, of the.
There's a walk down there. We should walk there. How are those means?
Yeah, they're doing okay. They're not, uh, you know, there's still some issues along the building line. We had a couple of issues over by the, I think it was a Keklo Spa. One point, um, but they are doing better than others. Cause there we would have seen a washout. Um, as rain came, permeates through the brick and then runs down, we would have seen it start to wash out. That was the reason why we did that there.
Do you also with, uh, the way we put the sidewalks down currently, do you also run into issues with, uh, weeds coming up more?
Not necessarily. We, we do, we do pretty well on the weeds, to be quite honest. Um, it's, it's, uh, we, we have to just make sure that there's enough material swept inside, inside the joints. We haven't seen weeds. This, the settlement is the, is the issue. So, you know, and it's specifically around a tree well, that's a difficult one. And then around where the granite curb is, since that's a fixed object. And it's, we tend to get a little settlement on the outside edge of the curb. Um, it seems to be, we get the settlement and then we adjust it and we're okay. We have to come back and do the adjustment and that, that's where some additional monies are.
And Tiger, we talked about the sightlines at, um, at the Stewart's, um, crosswalk there. We've got pedestrian warning there and we've looked at that before. That's not part of this, uh, project. This is.
Not part, well.
You're not changing the crosswalk in any way, right? I mean, is that?
Crosswalk, no, but Maria and I and our.
We're working fine. I mean, it's, you know, they've got the, got the alerts going.
Prior to the installation, Maria and I and our, our interns at the time, uh, our high school interns went out and measured the sightline and they were adequate in both, both, um, both legs, both, both approaches. So we actually, cause we, we taught them how to do it at the time. So they came out, did it with us.
Because coming from the west side up the hill, those warnings are high enough. So you should have enough, um.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll go on. We'll take another look, you know, but, but yes, at, at present, we, we felt that the, the sightlines were adequate. Uh, more than adequate at the time when we did the, uh, when we did the analysis. We'll go out and take another look with the, the, it will be incorporating a compliant curb ramp on the Walter Stewart side and then the sidewalk itself as far as width and cross slope. At present, they're not. So at, at present, they're not, um, compliant. So that's one of the reasons for this, uh, this work.
And the portion in front of stores where they have the sort of pull-up parking in front of the store, that's, how will that be affected? Is there gonna be a mountable curb there for them or is that?
That's one of the areas of concern that we have is to see exactly how to address that. It's one of the reasons why we, we stopped at the time. But it was because of that parking area. Um, but yeah, the, if it, if it can fit and we can make it work, it'd be likely a mountable curb in that location to then be able to drive on. I think people are doing that already. Um, but that's, that's the largest area concern that we have, crossing itself and, and making sure that it's compliant. And then that area, the rest of it is basically sidewalk replacement. Um, that's, that's, uh.
Been a long time coming.
Yes, yeah. I mean, I, I, I forgot exactly when we did the previous work, but it was well over ten years ago, I believe. So.
Good.
More questions. So would the ten thousand dollars be enough if you want to also have a design? The alt design option?
Yes. That's just an additional detail, um, that he would have to create. Once we create the detail, it'd be fine. So, yeah.
All right. If there are no further questions, if I could get a motion to approve a request from the Department of Public Works to enter into a contract with Cabezas De Angelis Engineers in the amount of ten thousand dollars for design services of the reconstruction of the sidewalks on Elm Street. Unanimous. Thank you. Morse Court parking lot.
Right. So Maria's gonna hand out the, um, the, what was the approved sketch?
Could this be included in the?
Yes, we can add that. Right. The, um, so, uh, the sketch that you have before you is, uh, one of seven iterations?
Yes.
Seven, seven iterations that Maria performed, um, for the parking commission. I went to the parking commission twice. They approved this, uh, layout, this, uh, this amendment. So it drops from a hundred and three spaces to ninety-three spaces. We did go to P and Z for an eight dash twenty-four review since we were lessening, um, an area. Um, and they gave us approval for it as well. So, um, now all we need is I, I went to safety markings since it had been, uh, some time between, uh, the last quote. And we actually had to ask them to grind out the existing lines. So it was an, an additional cost to grind out the lines and then re-stripe. So we have a cost of eleven thousand nine ninety-five for this, um, specific parking lot itself. And, uh, upon approval, we'll get them, we'll get them moving.
And the other piece of information that you didn't share, but the seven spaces are actually, we're not gonna lose any mid, uh, commit, you know, public spaces because the parking commission has reduced the number of commercial parking that is allowed in this area.
Sorry about that. That's correct. Yeah, that was part of the discussion was that one of their concerns was that loss of ten, our concern as well, but they, uh, they were able to amend that.
What's the, um, is there any change in the width of these parking spaces?
So, yes.
Those huge cars take up lots of space.
Design, you, I'll let you, it's your design. You can, you can.
Sure, sure. Yeah. One of the permutations that we actually looked at was the current layout as it is. But widening it to our planning and zoning regulations sizes. And there was a loss of twenty parking spaces based on the current layout. And that also includes the one-way, um, uh, access, circulation access-wise. So what we did is we looked at a series of options. Um, but really the most efficient layout option is always the ninety-degree parking space layout when you have the room for that. Um, and that allows for two-way circulation. And this result was a ten parking space reduction. So it was an improvement on the current layout. But it meets a nine foot by eighteen foot wide parking space, which is your standard planning and zoning regulation parking space. We are, because we're in the downtown area, we're allowed to go to eighteen foot, um, depth as opposed to your standard twenty in, in other areas. But that allows for the idea that we just don't have as much space, um, in the downtown. But you still have your twenty-four foot wide aisles. So you have maneuvering for back out and for two-way traffic.
So the width?
Is now nine feet as opposed to in some instances, seven and a half.
What's the width, um, like behind town? Yeah.
Eight and a half.
They are tight.
Yeah, the town hall lot is eight and a half. Then the upper ones are, uh, the annex, I believe is eight and eight and a half.
Yeah.
We'll be looking at that point in time. We're, we're in the process of redesigning that lot as well, along with the sidewalk access. So at that point in time, we'll be looking to widen those to, uh.
People have incredibly huge cars.
Problem is that you, 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 you wind up, you, you get to the larger width, you sacrifice number.
Sure.
But you sec, you increase usability, which likely helps with your, you know, your overall delta. Some spaces, if you can't drive into, people just, you know, it's an unused space for quite some time. So going to the standard nine, I think will help everyone. And I think it'll help turnover. I think it'll help, uh, you know, overall satisfaction.
So Maria, this ninety-degree, uh, design, when you pull around into the middle there, you really feel like you're gonna have enough room to maneuver there? Because that looks, to me, at first glance of this, looks extremely tight. I mean, that's like, how do you make a ninety-degree turn into a parking space in the middle of this? I mean, that's.
Right. Which is why the twenty-four foot aisle width is what you need for that.
So, so this is an optical illusion. And so it's gonna be much wider than it currently is or?
So, yeah, it's, it's a little bit hard to see because it's an overlay. But yeah, so it's twenty-four foot aisle width, eighteen foot parking space depth. And then since it's back to back, another eighteen feet and then twenty-four.
Because the angled parking that we've always had there where you can pull in allows you a little bit of maneuverability there. But this is like, when you picture actually getting a car in there and making, turning it around, let's say you have cars on both sides of that spot.
Right.
Getting into that spot at a ninety degree is, that's a challenge. I mean, that's, you know, and I'm a good parker. So, I mean, it'll be interesting. I mean, I, you know, just.
That's what the parking is at the train station. It's ninety, it's ninety degree.
And so even at Park Street, right?
Well, I'm just, you know, looking at this, looking at this and actually doing it, uh, you know, hopefully it'll be okay.
But is it locust, uh, it's not angled, is it?
No, no, locust is ninety.
Locust is ninety.
The lumberyard lot is ninety. The most efficient to Maria's point is ninety. And there is a trade-off. It's not a trade-off, but there's a different calculation or a different requirement for, if you're on an angle versus you're at a ninety degree. At the ninety degree, you're required to go to the twenty-four feet wide.
Yeah, that's all, I mean, if it works in other spot, it's just, I'm, I know that lot. Yeah. So I mean, if it works in other spot, it's just, I'm, I know that lot and just looking at the way it's laid out. It's just, it does, that middle aisle looks tight to me, but maybe.
But it's going to be wider.
Yeah.
Yeah, you get a line, you can see it's shorter than the distance that those angled parking spaces allowed.
And then another question over, we've, we've sort of hashed out where those dumpsters will be, right at the corner there on the, is that where we're talking about building that out?
That, uh, uh, yeah, it's currently hatched. Yeah, that, it's, so that's where the dumpsters are at present. So, um, just to the north of the mobile station.
They kind of migrate all over the place, but that's where they're supposed to be.
Yeah. I mean, and having those closed in so you don't have to look at them. I mean, that's, that'd be great. So.
Yeah, we had a proposal several years ago to do that. It just never came to fruition, um, during the previous administration. So, but, to Deanna's point, she's asked us to look at that. So, once we get it all laid out, we know where everything will be. Then we can talk to a fencing contractor to then, um, you know, put some posts in the ground, try to screen it so that the dumpsters are, uh, not visible.
On the main street side, uh, those are where the EV chargers are? Is that correct?
Yes. So there, there's an EV charger in that vicinity, um, and they'll still be able to be in use.
What's the deal? If you go use that space to charge your EV, you just can't hang there after it's charged. I mean, how, how does it work? So people?
They have to continue to feed the meter. You know, the, um.
So if you charge, you have to pay for the meter?
Well, just the normal meter. That's not the most efficient way to manage those, but yes.
It's not. We're working at, you know.
And is the electric, uh, who pays? Do you have to pay to?
The electricity is not, it's not a cert, we don't have a surcharge on that space. So we are looking at that. Deanna's asked us to look at that.
We have to look at that. It shouldn't be everyone's cost.
Back. So Joe's been working on a vendor, um, which will then basically is a direct charge to, um, and so you'd, you'd be paying for the.
Yeah, like the Tesla does. You recharge and if you're overcharged, they pay you a dollar a minute for hanging out there, something like.
Yeah. You want, you don't want to have the hangout charge because that's in essence icing, right? So you're kind of leaving the space on, you know, unusable for someone else.
Yeah.
So we are looking at that to bring in a, bring in a separate vendor for that. There's several vendors that provide that service. Joe's been doing a lot of research on it. We've selected a vendor. We'll be coming to you at some point to, uh, to do that.
Good.
Last question for me, the hashed out parallel parking along Main Street there, is that into the pavement that, that hashing?
Yes, it is. So there's the parking lot narrows, so we didn't have enough room for another full bay of, of perpendicular parking. And so that's to allow for, um, the passenger side to actually be able to get out that hatching, um, because.
Oh, so is there a wall there?
There's a, it's a curb and then the hillside.
A wall is a small, and then there's a, there's a wall drop off down to, uh, down to the sidewalk on Main Street. So it's, it's, uh.
Is it high enough that we're not going to have to do anything with the wall so that you don't have any issues?
Someone doesn't fall off, fall over.
It's consistent with how it is today with the parking in that area.
Get out that way.
Yeah, you don't get out that way. You park in vertically. So you'd never get out near a wall. This time you're asking people to possibly get out on a wall side. Do we have an issue with the height of the wall there? Or where somebody could?
You can ask Paul, but you have to, the Paul Payne, our fire marshal about that, but right now they have to walk through the planted area between the trees to then step off the walls. Cause it's a planted area. It's a planted area in between. You can see that brown strip along. That's a planted area where we have trees planted throughout there.
All right.
The hashes are, that's actually asphalt.
That's actually asphalt. Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The parallel park you're coming in, you've got to go in, I'm, I'm following the arrows. So you've got to go in.
The arrows are based on the area. So it's crazy.
Now it's two-way traffic.
All right. So. But the parallel park, you should be coming the other way, right?
Likely they should approach it from the south.
Yeah.
It, you know, and then come, you know, but.
Will that be, will that be a sort of a habit or a local?
It, it might be, I, you know, I mean, I would, if I was to approach it, I'd be approaching from the south so I could, you know, back in normally and not the other way. But I can't say that someone won't approach it from the north.
And on the other parallel spaces too, historically, those have been either way too. So people pull in and pull, you know, they parallel both ways. So.
You're talking along the curb line? Yeah, that was, that was brought to the parking commission's attention previously and they, um, did not want to have it, sign it saying, you know, right, right, or ticket with a right, uh, tire to the curb. We were asked at one point in time to sign, place signs both in both directions so that you could see it from both directions as you're approaching. And we said, no, we would only sign it in the appropriate direction so that as you're, as you're heading westbound, you would see the sign. They wanted us to double face the signs. You could see it heading eastbound and we, that would, we said no to that.
Yeah.
It's one thing to enforce it. It's another thing to actually, you know, sign it to show that you can park in both directions.
And the ones on Main Street makes sense. I mean, you'd logically want to have your, the car heading out if you are, are leaving, I would think. So that makes sense. But the other side is always a little confusing for people, but they manage. All right. Looks good.
Any other questions? If not, if I could get a motion to approve a request from the Department of Public Works to enter into a contract with safety markings in the amount of 11,995 dollars for the restriping of Morse Course parking lot.
Second.
Unanimous. Um, real quick, Tiger, when, remind us, timing?
Yeah, I'm going to try to get this as soon as possible. I'd like to be before, um, before school starts. So I'm going to be calling, we call it safety markings today.
What's the condition of the asphalt in there? Is it pretty?
We have several years left in it. So that this striping will last three to five years. It's a epoxy based, so it'll last three to five years and likely that'll, that'll extend us past that time.
Good.
Okay. Uh, HVAC.
Thank you.
So the first one we have up here is HVAC, um, first order approval, the, um, HVAC, we had a five-year, uh, contract that was approved four years ago. So the contract portion had been approved. So we're just seeking approval to, um, for a purchase order, uh, in the amount of the 53,570 and we have a small contingency of 267850 to go along with that request. Currently this year, uh, I am going to be going out to bid before we start our whole budget process, um, for next year. Cause this contract will be expires on, uh, June 30th of 25. So we'll go back out for a lot of our prevent and maintenance services so that we have some, uh, good hard numbers going to, uh, the budget process with. So, um, this particular contract, actually when he gave his number, he held the same number for five second of years, uh, which is great.
So Bill, let me, so this is basically your maintenance, you know, that you have to have like we do.
Air conditioning, HVAC, air handlers, uh.
But we had a bunch of AC breakdowns. So how do, how do, how do I get, uh, understand that we, you know, have all this maintenance? But we also have these, um, failure, we've had like what, three?
Yeah.
Do I have it right? Three, three of them?
Right. So, uh, there's multiple, multiple units in our buildings. It's not just like one system per building. There's quite a few of them. And.
And everyone that broke down, was it at the end of its useful life?
Well, most of them, like the one at the fire department, that was at the end of its useful life was 18 plus years old. It was a, um, actual, it was a ductless unit that they installed years ago. Now, and this kind of rotted out more than anything.
Oh, is it? That's all. Okay. Just to review for me the three that, that there was, the three places.
That was the other one that ironically, we had a money in this current budget year for an assessment of all the equipment mechanicals down there. Because it's getting to the end of its useful life that unfortunately just, um, it, yeah, it beat us to it, to be honest with you.
Right. And the other one was where? The other?
Team Center. Uh, again, uh, we had that in the budget for next year. Um, it's good at the end of useful life and that one. So that's two systems over there. The one that failed was for the lower level. Next budget cycle, we will put it in to replace the one for the upper level cycle, uh.
So the preventive maintenance is you just like, you know, we all have to do this at home, right? And but e- even with this, as things get to the useful life, a fan could break or something that. I'm just trying to understand how that, how that.
A lot of it has to do with our EPA, to be honest with you, because they changed the freon requirements. You can't get it. So when a compressor fails, it's just not made anymore. It's not available. Uh, everything else seems to be good in it. And unfortunately, when you go into the new freons, the new compressors, it doesn't work in the coils that are an air handler. So it's just domino effect. So now we're going to the next phase with this EPA with all these newer, newer requirements we're doing. And that new one expires in 2035. So they're trying to develop something that they can continue past 2035. So it's in, I guess, engineers hands out, out there somewhere. Who's going to design the future systems?
Do you have an idea of how many air handlers this represents? Just, I don't need the, well, just because I know what I spend for mine at my home every year to have that inspection. So I just.
Can get that to you off the top of my head. It's, it's a lot.
Like just a, it doesn't have to be, I'm not going to hold you to the exact number, but I just am like.
Probably we're 50 units.
Yeah.
You know? Yeah.
Yep. Just to, it puts the number in perspective.
And, and so I guess it's just, you know, we have so many buildings and so many mechanicals. And even if you're maintaining them all, it is not unusual that something at the end of its life is going to break. And as you said, now you can't replace it. You have to switch to just different system.
And each area is, uh, different requirements, like the highway department is an example. The buildings down there, because of their environment of what's going on around there, I have to do the filter changes four times a year instead of two times a year because they just don't last. They, they end up collapsing because of the dusty environments. So the building basically has its own unique profile, what we need to do going forward.
And that's all, those filter changes four times a year.
Yeah. Belt changes in some senses, they, they grease and oil all the bearings on a lot of our, a lot of stuff.
All right. If I have no further questions, if I could get a motion to approve a request from the Department of Public Works to approve it. FY25 purchase order in the amount of 53,570 dollars plus a contingency of 2,678 dollars and 50 cents for a total request of 56,248 dollars and 50 cents with MA Garamella to provide HVAC preventive maintenance services.
So one is going right back to what Amy had just said before. We have this is another, uh, unit over at the Lapham Community Center, which, um, is a newer unit. It's about six.
There's no heading for this. What is this?
Here's emergency repairs.
Oh, there's, okay, there's something between 22 and 23.
Uh, those words probably go under 23.
It's just, yeah, it's a carry of the paragraph.
Is there more that we needed to? Oh, okay.
We have the five year.
Okay.
You good?
Yep.
Okay. So, uh, number 23, the emergency repairs, um, as I was saying, going to what Amy had just brought up. This is a, uh, air handle unit at the Lapham Community Center, which isn't that old. Unfortunately, it's only about six years old. We, we replaced them all. We had a pressure problem with the unit that serves the kitchen over there. We diagnosed it and they thought it was a pressure switch. As it turned out that the coil is actually clogged, something inside internally must have let loose. We can't seem to unclog it. So we need to change the new coil, uh, put a new coil system in it, which one is available for that particular model. So, um, we moved forward was, uh, over upwards of 80 plus degrees in that area turned camp. It was a little tough for the kids, early young people who were doing it. So, um, uh, first select and authorized emergency repair on this, we did order everything. I'm hoping to get the stuff in, you know, this week and get it swapped out. So this is, this is where we are in this particular one. We're just looking for the, uh, I guess going back at it, that it was already approved by the first selectment as emergency repair.
This is at Lapham, right? I only say, cause you said kids at camp. I mean.
Some kind of camp going on up there for kitchen class or cooking class or some sort? I don't know exactly. Was it kids?
I don't know if it's kids.
Oh, I don't know if it was kids. It was a cooking class. I'm sorry.
Yeah. Okay. So, so is it down right now and you're waiting for the part?
Yeah.
And you ordered for this?
We get this done.
They say within one week and it was a week ago that we did this. So I'm hopeful that they may be out there today or tomorrow to get it installed.
All right.
So with, with this 9400, is that like, then it's kind of a new system then or just that one is a condenser?
Well, yeah, it is kind of a new system since it's originally only six years old and they typically have about a 20, 25 year life cycle on them.
So is this 90, is, is, do we now have, the clock starts now that it's now 20 year?
I would, yeah, I'd like to say, yeah, I'd just say we're going to have a good life on this one. Um, I'm still not done with train on this issue. We can't fight it without having the parts in our hands. So I, I plan on pursuing them to see if I can get something from them out of this because it is not that old.
Yeah.
They're a big company. Something failed internally and it shouldn't have.
Right.
We just got to try to figure out what it is and prove that it was maybe manufacturing effect. I don't know. I'm going to try.
You can try. Yeah.
Try, you know?
All right. Could I get a motion to approve a request from the Department of Public Works to enter into a contract with MA Garamella in the amount of 9,400 dollars for an emergency repair to the AC unit at Lapham Community Center?
Done with.
It's unanimous. Northeast generator.
Okay. This one here is for the maintenance of our generators. We've had some changes over the past year with generators. We've added one to the ambulance corps. Uh, we removed one temporarily from the old police department, I guess we can call it. I saw it to Avenue as it's going through construction. Um, so there has been a, a few changes there and we added one to, uh, Vine Cottage. So, uh, just getting everything, uh, equaled out again, we'd like to get this approval to cover the maintenance, twice a year maintenance for these generators. And once again, we'll be going out to bid later this season, uh, to get a further contract now that we have all our generators hopefully figured out.
How many total generators do we have? I'm sorry.
My God, we have, I think, I 14 right now, I think.
Yeah, including the mobile one.
Including the mobile, yeah. I think so. 14, I have to, because I know we added to two was 434. Yeah, I think it's maybe 15 with the big mobile one. So, and we did keep the, uh, one from the police department, even though it doesn't, it's too small now for over there, but still, uh, it's still got some life to it. We hung on to it. Tiger, I'm trying to figure out like, uh, do we set up as another standby or worst case, we, we could just, uh, sell it. So, um, we're, we're going to throw it away. That's for sure.
All right. If I could get a motion to approve a request from the Department of Public Works for a purchase order with Northeast Generator in the amount of $10,000 for preventive maintenance for town emergency stand, standby generators. Unanimous.
Speaking of generators.
We have a lot of heating HVAC.
Yeah.
We have that many buildings. That's what you get.
And old buildings.
Yeah. Well, they get older every year, right? And time goes by. We all notice. So the emergency generator, um, so this is, uh, the wastewater treatment plant. So we have our current, uh, mobile generator. It's hooked up to the temporary boys department. And, um, we had purchased that one with thoughts in mind using it to waste water treatment plant in case of emergency. Well, you know, Murphy's law, right? So what happened on the wastewater plant was we have a motor issue and we have a big V12 Detroit diesel in there. Had them come down from middle town to look at it and determine that they, uh, when the valve guides, uh, came apart. So the motor got metal in it. So we had to shut it down immediately. Um, I needed an emergency backup right away. And, um, we already got one through Northeast Generator. They came down and hooked it up. It's a huge one. It's on a tractor trailer size. It's a mega watt, to be honest with you. It's huge. It's the only one that was available. So we got it. And, um, so the monthly rental on that is, um, the 16,000. And I added the 7392 because that's the weekly rental on those things. We did get the quote, uh, from the diesel people to fix the motor. They found the parts are in Texas. They are bringing them up. We will bring that to you in two weeks on the quote to fix that, but it's, it's, it's a not a cheap repair. It's a huge, huge machine. It's very big. So, uh, right now.
It's repairing the existing generator that went down, right?
Yeah.
And that, that, how old is that?
Uh, when you put that in 2020, uh, 2000, yeah, so 24 years old. Quite sexy on those generators, especially since it's indoors. It's, you know, around 40 years. As long as you do the maintenance on it, it's in a controlled environment, which is great. Unfortunately, um, they had a motor issue for whatever reason, and, um, hopefully we will clean that up and no problem and just get the rest of the life out of it. I mean, it's, it's, stuff happens. Um, it's a lot cheaper to fix it than it is to go out at this point.
Full, what's a new unit cost?
Quarter, quarter million.
Billion dollars. 250, sorry.
On there. And it's a, it's, it's a big unit. It's the biggest one we have, 600 KW. So it's.
Is this the first time it's ever broken?
Yes, it's had problems in the past, you know, normal wear and tear with, uh, the, uh, we had to replace a radiator a few years ago. That was like 12,000.
But in those situations, do we have to bring an emergency one in?
Yes. Anytime that generator goes down, I have to get one down.
You don't want to be messing around with the wastewater treatment plant. No, I'm just trying to understand. Yeah.
How much, how much do we have to watch? Do we spend on that emergency generator, the mobile one? Do you remember?
Exactly.
And that's a multiple. That thing will work on any building.
Well, I mean, it's.
Should we have a second one of this?
Well, I'm just thinking, you're, yeah, 25,000 right now, plus whatever you bring us back, which is not going to be a small number. I mean.
Yeah. Maybe it, it's not a bad question to talk about.
Think about it. At the time we, you know, we went for the first one, it was.
Think about it, at the time we, you know, when we went for the first one, it was a difficult sell, but now that you see, you know, what can happen.
I just feel like I've I've approved multiple emergency generators this year and, you know, if we had. Now, maybe, I don't know, is the sizing going to be an issue for some versus others?
Tiger, I don't think it was a tough sell. Because well, if I remember correctly, we were taught, you were talking about putting a generator backup, I think, for the annex. And then we said, well, wait a minute. Instead do that, let's get the mobile one. And we we pushed it off a year because of the timing, but I think people thought that was a good idea. So I would keep in the back of your mind in terms of your capital for next year.
Couple approaches we did look at at this and I guess we've been doing the program for several years now, doing docking stations where there's no physical generator in sight. But the ability to plug one in is there.
Built that into buildings, yeah.
There's mobile generator and it's really simple plugs. I say simple to hook up, not simple if you don't understand electricity. So don't misunderstand that. It has to be hooked up right. Um, so we are looking at some other buildings to do this.
And and now the mobile ones, the police is is hanging, where's the current mobile one? It's over.
So at the Locust Avenue, wow.
Right, so there there is a thing, if it's mobile, except if we booked it in for a year, it's not mobile. So maybe after the, I mean. I guess we have to think of it in terms of big construction projects. If we don't have a big construction project, maybe that does really.
Yeah, because that one's going to live. It's going to be permanently parked at the wastewater treatment plant near that docking. Because we have an external docking station at the wastewater plant for situations like this. And the thought was always that if that went down, you know, we just plugged that one in and switch it on.
So so had this gone down and we weren't already using the mobile one for the police station renovation, we would have been okay, right?
Well, yeah, with this, this, this item, we wouldn't be here for this item. We'd be here for the repair. We wouldn't be here for the rental.
Maybe we should have put this on the police budget.
Hey, listen, I just want to get the job done. How you guys want to pay for it? How about it?
It speaks to whether we, if we do need an additional mobile one, perhaps not, perhaps not, right?
Into into in the second one. And again, we do have that one that was at the police department, that's smaller, that can service many some of the buildings. When you get into a multi tap.
Can it be mobile?
You can make it mobile, but it's a fixed generator for the current voltage it puts out where the big one we have, reasons why it's so expensive. Because I can make that thing anything we need, right down to running Vine Cottage, to run the wastewater point, treatment plant, going from single phase to a three phase. Regular one twenty voltage to four eighty three phase. There's a big fluctuation that the, that thing's able to do, which is fantastic.
And that should, that should free up by the end of this year when the PD.
Right, correct.
And once they move out, we'll we'll have it back. We'll have back avenues.
And 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 nothing will break down after that, once we have it back.
Right, so why don't, okay.
It does make the question have one, maybe not that size, but a smaller one to the, to the point of reutilizing the police department one or another. So we can then utilize the fact that we have all these pigtails at all of our buildings and then be able to move things around.
Also, like in future planning for projects, we probably shouldn't be taking our backup generators.
Making them mobile, yeah.
Time I took.
I mean, we should have been figuring that into the overall cost of the police department, probably.
To take a smaller unit at one point, a one fifty KW multi tap, we rented during sort of San Diego it was. And we rigged it up to work at the Y by shedding the loads. So getting a smaller one. Doesn't necessarily work on a building. You just may have to shed some in the load of what you're doing.
Do less, be able to do less, yes, kind of like it, yeah.
So, you know, so there's, and that's a much less expensive unit, hundred fifty KW versus like, you know, five hundred that I have, so.
So what the the the, I'm going to say leftover room for the police department, so what would that cost to make it? To make it a mobile?
Not tremendous amount of money, but it's, but it's not a, it's not a multi tap unit. It's only for one, it's only a three phase one twenty. So whatever building is three phase one twenty it would work on, I'd have to see how many buildings actually fit that criteria to say, okay, if it's only good for one building or two buildings. You may not want to do that. If it's good for seven or eight of our buildings, then you might have.
That would be a good, good thing to look at, see if that makes sense.
Yeah. Yeah, okay, so I mean, it's.
Yeah.
All right, if I could get a motion to approve a request from the Department of Public Works to enter into a contract with Northeast Generator in the amount of sixteen thousand seven hundred ten dollars? Plus a contingency of seven thousand three hundred ninety two dollars for a total cost of twenty four thousand one hundred two dollars. This is for a backup emergency generator rental for the wastewater treatment facility. Second, unanimous, thank you. Uh, purchase order increase.
This is for, um, you know, just for the, just for the police department, right? So this one here is, we did this last, last year too. So this for a purchase order. Let me explain this way. The Locust Avenue, we're responsible for the electricity over there. But to go through all the meter changing, I think was what involved for a short term. So the, uh, the Plaza Realty. Who is, um, whatever the company is now, is FJ, yeah, pays the bill. We just reimburse them. It's the pastor. So we're just seeking to, uh, get the proof for the purchase order. For the sixty four thousand five seventy, because that's currently what's available in that line. I'm on the budget for the PD. We will be going to the Board of Finance to request a transfer approval for additional forty thousand. At which time, if you were to prove this, would, uh, we'd be able to just increase that PO by that forty thousand. The electric bill approximately a little over a hundred thousand a year, based on when the Board of Ed was there. A little different because we're twenty four seven over there. I don't know how much more it's going to add to it. There's been some increases in electricity and we just, you know, DPUC just approved the tran, uh, delivery of the. Ever source to increase their rates to another three to five, uh, three to six cents per kilowatt. So. Maybe some, we think we might have all covered in this. It's really hard to tell because we don't have a history on the building with PD being there.
And this is for, how how many months is it like?
Why? Because we're.
One month?
Till till June, I'm sorry, till June.
All year.
I'm sorry, a year, sorry, I'm already in, I'm still in July, it's August.
Knowing of twenty five, uh, which time, um, we'll reevaluate if they're done, move them out, we're we're done.
They should be done.
Yeah, but there's a point when the building's done versus then we're commissioning the building before we bring police in. So there's that timeframe in there. So we're looking at, it's a, there's a sweet spot. We might be able to get out in July. We might have to carry another month or two. And then, and then bring the PD over at that point. What we don't want to do is bring the police department over too early and then actually have to do work in the building. That's very, very difficult during an active police station, you know, police department to bring someone into work. So that's the reason for the carry.
Right, and the Locust Avenue building is all electric, including the heat and everything. So it is a heavily reliant on electricity. And boy, they're not come, springtime, it's it's not as bad, the electricity, the costs go down.
Any other questions? If I could get a motion to approve a request from the Department of Public Works to increase a previously approved purchase order in the amount not to exceed one hundred four thousand five hundred. Seventy dollars for monthly electric charges for the temporary police department at thirty nine Locust Avenue.
So moved.
Second, unanimous, thank you. Cleaning maintenance services.
Maintenance service. Um, we're seeking approval for a purchase order for twenty thousand dollars for sparkling clean cleaning services. Um, and maintenance, um, it's more reliant on the maintenance portion of what they do. They do small, uh, or construction projects. Install doors, uh, pier ceilings, you know, stuff like that. So, uh. We have a bunch of small little projects out there that are, we'd like these, uh, these folks to do. So work for a blanket. You know, to cover all these little small couple thousand dollar projects. There are a handful of them, which we'd like to get done.
And this is something like Butch can't handle that or?
No, he, um, Butch did look at him and we were trying to schedule him to do that, but to be honest with you, Butch is spread so thin between. Everything's been going on and what's happening and it's just, every time we attempt to go do it, it's hard to tie him up for two or three days. It's just, it's just, it's just, it's hard. It, what's good about Butch, he's talented in the carpentry field, that's what he does and and some to a degree some electrical. So having Butch, uh, have his eyes on it and kind of put some of these programs together, uh, helps. Like, uh, as a door project that we have to do on one door, we we purchased the door, Butch measured all that, we purchased, we needed, prepped it all. Finding time to install it's been a problem. We'll get the guy to go install it. And these people love the idea of not having to buy nothing. They like to supply the labor. I'll supply the materials so we have a savings there and Butch can help me manage the smaller project. You go out there, make sure it's done right. Boom, move on.
And this is, uh, twenty thousand for all of next year for these little tiny projects, right?
Yeah, for the little tiny projects, yeah.
And who signs off on it? Who who signs off on, um, you know, that's.
Well, we'll put a little scope together and they'll give us a.
I mean, who?
If it's an invoice, it'll be signed by the department and then I'll have to review it.
Okay.
To sign it, to get it paid.
Procedures like we always do on this.
Yep. Okay. If I could get a motion to approve a request from the Department of Public Works for blanket purchase order approval in the amount of twenty thousand dollars? With sparkling clean cleaning services and maintenance LLC for maintenance and small building repairs and town buildings.
So moved.
It's unanimous. Annex roof.
Annex roof. Um, so this is a, um, approval to have Jay Antonelli roofing, just do some, um. Probe cuts on the roof on the annex behind us. And if you notice, it's been starting to look not too happy lately. Uh, we need to open it up and have an engineer. You get eyes underneath that roof, see what's going on, see why it's got the seams in it, why the roofs, the shingles tend to start to slide off so easily. We have money in the budget to do a roof on this. Um, I'm hesitant to just go out and put out the bid just to replace a fiberglass roof. Because I'm concerned that we may open up a problem that I want to know ahead of time. I don't want to find out after we open the roof to put a roof on it. So it involves also having a, um, an articulating. Man lift out there to be able to get up. It did roof very steep and very high, so it's it's going to take a little bit to do this.
How old's that roof?
Uh, twenty, uh, four years old, it's in twenty twenty, it's twenty two thousand, they, uh, they built that, I recall.
How did you pick this group, Antonelli Roofing?
Antonelli's done a lot of work for us. He's currently doing some work in the, uh, Derwin Barn for us right now on the roof up there. So he's, he's, uh. More or less mobilized and nearby, that is Stanford. And it's really just having him going up there doing the cuts and doing the patch. It's more about getting the engineer's head underneath that roof to see what's going on.
And I mean, it's, it sounds counterintuitive to cut into a roof to see what's in there. I mean, we're not seeing any leaking, but. This is just to let us know how long we have before?
No, it has to do with the actual structure of the building and the materials they used. Uh, going back, reviewing all the plans. Um, if you recall, that building was put together, um, in sections.
Yep.
Prefab, so to speak, and the sifts up there, which you can almost see the outline of them through the fiberglass roof for about twenty foot by eight foot pieces they put in there. But they're showing the seams of them for some reason, so it's it's rising up and dropping down. It may be the materials they use, if they use the press board stuff, maybe some moisture got in there, it's causing that, I don't know. It could be that it's lacking some kind of structural support in there to keep it from bellowing, so to speak.
But this is a result of you actually seeing something that is.
You got the one, you know, that roof, you could see every seam, you can see them this way and then along the top, they put the sifts along that way. So the fact that, and this is really just really starting to get predominant in the past six, seven, eight months. Because when we had the budget, we were just saying, we're going to rip it off, uh, we were discussing what we're going to do for color and all that stuff. And then all of a sudden it started to appear and I'm like, what's going on here? Um, I talked to two contractors about it and they, uh. Both said that you're best off by getting somebody to look at this. Because if we come in and we strip the fiberglass roof over there and you have a problem, you're not going to, you know, you know, you don't want to just try to solve that problem. When you have an open wood roof, you you want to know now.
Yeah.
And I said, okay, so.
So you're potentially talking about not only removing the fiberglass, but you're also talking about removing the actual.
I I don't know that. I'm not going to commit to that. There's, uh, there was some discussion about different roofing materials you can put over it. If it's, if, depending on what it is, um, we need these guys to go in there and then we'll we'll know better, I expect it, yeah.
Hey Bill, do you remember in the, uh, five year capa plan, ten year capa plan, is there, were you guys thinking that next year? Is there roof roofing number for the annex in, for the next budget?
It's in this, in this, in this twenty twenty five.
Yeah, we originally just, to Bill's point, we were just, we thought it was just going to be a rip and replace. And we're actually talking colors, you know, because people didn't like the colors that were there. Now we're seeing something happening with the roof itself. So now we're going to take a look and do a little bit more investigation.
We talked about this for the past, what, three years doing their roof or. Eighty, eighty five thousand, I believe, in the budget, so there's, um.
If we, uh, um, you know, if if you don't see anything and it it turns into a rip and replace, um.
Oh, we move forward.
The, uh, six, this amount come under the budget number that that you have.
It it should, you know, it should, um, you know, we we had, uh, some idea what's going to cost to do the rip or replace. Some of the, um, costs that are unknown is really how, uh, means and methods because of the slope of that. Are they going to scaffold the whole building or are they going to use aerial lifts, jacks, you know, every contractor could do something different. And that makes a break a bit, be honest with you, because you scaffold a building like that, you can be looking at a lot of money. Because of the liability with scaffolding companies versus go out and rent the machine, aerial if they just go up there and do it. It's all in the contract who visits and how they want to do it, on means and method, so.
What's the number in the budget?
Five thousand.
If I could get a motion to approve a request from the Department of Public Works to enter into a contract with Jay Antonelli Roofing in the amount of six thousand two hundred fifty dollars? In order to perform town hall annex roof testing. It's unanimous. Last item, Carriage Barn Arts Center.
Poor Hillary.
Hillary, I saw her, I saw her come on. She needed to come in.
Hi.
Hi, sorry. Meeting.
Hi.
Hey, Hillary.
Yes, that was. That was. I've been. Okay, thank you. Um, in February, we presented our Waveney Park Arts Festival. Which was approved and has been improved by the Parks and Rec Department. Um, this will be the second annual arts fest on October sixth. In Waveney Park in the sort of vicinity around the Carriage Barn and the Powerhouse Theater. So in addition to having artists and artisans selling their items in the park. Um, we want to bring in up to four sort of food and beverage, food trucks, beverage vendors. Um, because this is an all day event, we'll have, um, you know, people here throughout the day as well as the actual artists and volunteers. We wanted to add that to the event. So we are looking for approval to have up to four food trucks. Um, which would be probably two food trucks and one ice cream truck and one sort of coffee beverages type of, um. Vendor. We are looking to to bring in local, um, local businesses where possible. Um, they would pay a small fee to the Carriage Barn to sort of offset our costs of organizing the festival. But then they would just be selling, um, you know, directly to, uh, attendees.
Who handles the trash with this? The trash that would be generated from the food trucks?
The, well, we have our dumpster, which we used, um, last year. So they can use that, but, um. I think the, the food trucks, like the taco truck, I think typically they bring their own trash containers. And just take those with them when they leave. But we, you know, last year, we we didn't really have, you know. Have that issue, but we managed all the trash on our own with our own dumpster, um, which is right behind the Carriage Barn.
Hillary, was there, was there food last year or no?
Um, last year, we had, um, an ice cream truck and one food truck. And, um, that was on us. We didn't realize that last year that we needed to get the separate approval. So we are hoping to correct that this year. But, yeah, the, the, the trash from those were, um. They had, the food truck handled it. They took it away themselves and then the ice cream, we just managed that through, um, our, our dumpster here.
I mean, that's, yeah, that's the only consideration I would see. Yeah, just make sure that's not an issue.
Yeah, I mean, last year, last year's event was, was really tremendous for the inaugural event. He had a, a nice, uh, it was, it was amazing.
We're hoping for as beautiful a day. And, um, yeah, I mean, everyone who came last year is already kind of asking, asking about the next one and looking forward to it. And we have, looking to expand on some of the artists and artisans and have a really nice mix of local, you know. Local artists, you know, to be able to come and discover them and support them. So we're really excited.
Remind me of the hours of the event?
It's from ten to four.
Four.
So the, they come and set up starting at eight and then, um, at the end of the day at four. You know, within like, really within an hour, everything was pretty much packed up and, you know, out of the park.
Yeah, great. Now, what a great event. So I hope, I hope you get great weather and, uh, it's a big success.
Great.
Thanks. So, uh, any other questions before? If I could get a motion to approve a request from the Carriage Barn Arts Center, along with the Parks and Recreation Department, to approve up to four food and beverage vendors? To sell products during the already approved Waveney Parks Art Festival to be held on October sixth, twenty twenty four in Waveney Park.
So moved.
It's unanimous. It's unanimous. Thank you, Hillary.
Thank you.
All right.
Thanks so much.
I know. Okay, so moving on, you should have on your tablets the contracts under ten thousand dollars. If you want to look and see if you have any questions. Or a lot.
It's a lot of John Hen.
This was, well, this, this is, I know, this was a lot of establishing stuff for the year, so it was a lot. Yeah.
Wow.
Anna had a lot. She was bringing candy. Yeah. So, yeah, I was signing a lot, as you can see. All right. We all right?
Yep.
Okay. So moving on to selectmen's comments. I don't have anything. It was gonna be about Mozy, but we already did that, so.
Got a chance to see him next time.
All right. And, you know, just next week or two weeks when we get to get the update on the Waveney.
Yes.
That's also getting updated where we are in the elevator.
Yeah.
Okay, just pull that in.
Yep.
We'll make sure. Right. You were tenth, not third, right?
Right.
Yes. Were the tenth, not third, yeah. Yeah, yeah. Okay, so we'll make sure we get that elevator added to the Waveney update. And if I could get a motion to adjourn. Second, unanimous. Okay.